Good afternoon. If we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting. Thank you, thank you very much. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's August fifteenth. And we'll be starting this meeting an hour late at six o'clock. And we do apologize for that delay. And we're gonna go ahead and start with item two, which is the pledges of allegiance. And at this moment, I request that we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. So this will take us to item four. For A is the August twenty twenty-three student recognitions. And item for B, which is August twenty-three staff recognitions. And if I can ask the board to step down in front for pictures as we do the rest of the recognitions. Yeah, I apologize. I made a mistake. We got a request for a speaker on one of our items. They have to leave and they would like to speak. And so if there's no objections from the trustees, this is a member of the Shack when the original EHAB policy was put in place. And so if there's no objections on the board, I would just like the speaker to go ahead and have their three minutes now, since they do have to leave. No objections. Ms. Wigum, if you'd mind joining us, you have three minutes. And if we can get the timer up, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Board President, Board members, and superintendent. My name is Leah Wigum. I'm a long member, longtime member of the EPISD School Health Advisory Council. I am a parent here at EPISD with two children. And in addition to that, professionally, I run a research center here in town called the UT Health Houston Center for Community Health Impact, where we focus on, among other things, nutrition and physical activity. So I have advanced training in those areas. And I'm here today because I was part of the Shack that brought forward the policy that is on the agenda today to be removed. And I think it's most appropriate that if there's going to be discussion about changing EHAB local, about removing the forty-five-minute requirement of PE in elementary school, it needs to include the Shack, because those parents brought that change forward several years ago. There were many reasons for that. And we need to honor that parent involvement and include the Shack. We haven't had our first Shack meeting yet this year since the school year just started. That will happen in September. So that's my request for today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wigman. Thank you for serving on Shack. Ms. Rodriguez, I pass it back over to you now.
Good evening, Board President Iribali, Board members, and Superintendent Sayavedra. I am here this evening to recognize some of our amazing district representatives and their achievements. Our first well-deserved recognition this evening is for a very talented group of fine arts students from various high schools. These students gave up their summer break to make the summer production of Grease a resounding success. The El Paso ISD Fine Arts Department is proud to have one of the longest-running public high school summer musical programs in the nation. Bringing the best of what fine arts has to offer, with more than seventy talented students in music, dance, choir, theater, and art, we celebrated the thirty-eighth live onstage musical production with the hit musical Grease. Nearly four thousand community members attended throughout the musical's run this past July. Fine art teachers and students worked diligently to put on this production in just four weeks and received outstanding reviews from the public, including a member of the United States Congress. Please join me in welcoming these students, who are accompanied by Philip Barasa, Fine Arts Director, and the staff that helped in the success of these students. Starting with McKenna Osborne. Everett Granados. Bella Valenzuela. Sadie Ritchie. Abby Norton. Dante Lewis. Sarah Franz. Zenadia Ramirez. Ruben Martinez. Alexandra Lugo. Miguel Vazquez. Mariel Mendoza. Mendoza, I'm sorry. Vanessa Fleming. Hope Rich. Morgan Berry. Samuel Gutierrez. Giovanni Spivey. Teresa De La Peña. Jade Cervantes. Alyssa Bustamante. Troy Alba. Daisy Paul. Divya Cortez. Catherine Cardenas. Marlo Martinez. Destiny Licon. Ala Jaras. And finally, Luis Bilon. Congratulations on a well, job well done. Can we get everyone in for a photo, please? No, go ahead, go ahead. Do you wanna get in there with the photographer? Feel free. No, 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 you can go in there.
So they start singing that, they're gonna start twitching. And everybody be like, no!
Thank you. Our next recognition is for one of our outstanding principals, who has dedicated many years to public education. The Region Nineteen Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, or TASP, named Austin High School Principal Cindy Ponce as the High School Principal of the Year. Ms. Ponce, who has been at Austin since 2018, will be representing El Paso ISD at the state level. She has more than thirty years of experience as a public educator and has served as an English teacher, cheerleading coach, testing coordinator, assistant principal at several high schools. She has a bachelor's and a master's degree from the University of Texas at El Paso. TASP is celebrating its one-hundredth year in 2023. The organization is devoted to offering Texas principals and assistant principals a forum to explore best practices in school administration with the ultimate goal of facilitating student learning. Let's congratulate Ms. Ponce with a huge round of applause for receiving this award. Thank you. This concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Okay, so this is going to bring us to our public forum. The public forum procedures will now be shared by staff. Please ask the audience to, everyone, could they turn around your attention to the monitors up here for the procedures for public meeting?
The district is a local government body, charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district. And board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display stability and decorum that is respect for other persons, without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent, or public complaints. The deputy superintendent of administration is in attendance if you wish to discuss a matter with him. Please note that during public forum, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not posted on its agenda.
Trustee Hernandez.
Cameron Sierra. Open forum speakers.
Good evening, President Iribali, Board members, and Superintendent Sayavedra. My name is Cameron Sierra, and I'm a speech-language pathologist at Coach Archie Duran Elementary and Urban High School. Ms. Hernandez stated, "We knew that some teachers and pay positions are not up to par, so we worked diligently with HR for the last four or five months." They did some realignment of positions, SLPs and such. There's a list of those. Mr. Villardi stated that he was going to stand behind the people who worked their butts off to try to come forth with a package that is fair, that is going to do everything that it can to retain the staff that we have within the limits that exist. He went on to say, "I trust that the package that has been delivered for us to approve today is a sound package." He was open to listening and possibly supporting a needed tweak. Of note, twenty fewer SLPs are present from our email list from two years ago to now. Can we please do more to retain our current SLP staff? Dr. Acevedo asked, "What would it cost the district to move the speech-language pathologists from a 106 to a 107?" The answer, instead of the 106 to the 107, would be an additional four hundred thousand. Key word, additional. During a discussion from that same meeting, it was financially equated that ten million dollars equaled seven days in the Bank of Reserves. Let me point out another statistic for you all. SLPs are required to make up therapy that is missed due to our absence. Many of us, who have been SLPs in the district for more than fifteen-plus years, have missed more than seven days, especially if you're a parent, and still have to make up therapy that was missed and bill for that therapy, so that the district can receive Char's reimbursement for those services. We get docked a day, yet still have to do the work. This has been a requirement the entire time that I've been employed with EPISD. Seven days times how many therapy sessions made up times how many therapists? That additional four hundred thousand is less than three hours from that ten million to seven-day ratio. How many days, hours, and money have we been giving back to the district when making up therapy on days that we have been docked? Food for thought. Where are our critical staffing needs? Mrs. Hanani pointed out that critical shortage that is impacting our students on a day-to-day basis by not having enough SLPs. It is clear to many of you now how desperate this situation really is and is only getting worse. Why do you think that we didn't get any of the thirty UTEP cohort students from UTEP? Thirty is a huge number, by the way. When I graduated from my graduate program, we had thirteen. Many had less than that. We are medically based, which is why it is a very difficult program to get through. But why do you think none of them came to EPISD? Despite six thousand dollar sign-on bonuses, money spent on recruitment and travel, we can all say the great things that we want and provide as much support on our colleague level as we can, but those students experienced life in EPISD and others in districts, and they talk. They compare notes, they compare experiences, they compare shortcomings, they compare lack of value, they compare. While we are very thankful that you have realized that something was off with the realignment presented by HR, they did not include us moving up to the next pay grade. Nabringer SLPs knew that. We should be paid our worth. I am asking EPISD to move to the 107 for that. Thank you.
Open forum speaker, Sheri Ritter. Sheri Ritter.
Good evening, Board President Iribali, Board members, and Superintendent Sayavedra. My name is Sheri Rider. I'm a proud speech pathologist with EPISD. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mr. Iribali and Ms. Hanani for their help with this pay scale, pay grade debacle. I'm grateful to you both and Mr. Moore of EPAPT for working so hard to ensure that we, as SLPs, are going to be paid for all of the work that we do. I have never been told before that I make good money for what I do, or that I didn't go into education to get rich. First, I am a speech pathologist with a science background. I'm not a teacher. I happen to work in the school setting because I love working with children. I do not understand how HR executive director can even say that. These disparaging comments make me feel devalued and not wanted. The question is, why was this even brought up? I cannot understand how, having thirty-five years of experience in EPISD and thirty-nine years with the state, I would not be at the maximum of maximum on the pay scale. I am a mouse in a maze trying to get the dangling cheese, but I never will. I don't understand why EPISD is constantly trying to make me feel stupid and just accept what they say as gospel. Those ploys and tactics don't work anymore. I'm neither stupid nor ignorant. I'm watching, I'm looking at everything, and we'll be back again and again until all of this stops. The SLPs of EPISD deserve that. What we don't deserve is the complete and total lack of transparency that we were promised. Thank you.
Roger Scott Brown. Roger Scott Brown. Randy Lane Wild. Adrian Flores.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent Sayavedra. My name's Adrian Flores, and I'm a proud physical education teacher. I'm asking you to please consider the EHA bill or the draft. Please do not take away the forty-five minutes of physical education daily for our students. Research has shown that students learn through movement. Movement is an important part of learning. Kids need to be moving. If we take away those forty-five minutes from our students in physical education, that's gonna be more instructional time in the classrooms. Kids are gonna get restless. Kids are gonna be, you're gonna have discipline problems. Why? Because kids are made to move. Kids need to move. We, as physical educators, we teach life skills. We teach SEL, social-emotional learning. We teach cooperation. We teach a lot of different skills that students need throughout their life, where they're gonna learn about sports, like I said, teamwork. I ask you to also please consider the parents that are on the Shack Committee that voted for forty-five minutes of physical education. Please do not take away those forty-five minutes away from our students. We love our students. I've spoken to many physical education teachers, myself. We want our students forty-five minutes. We want them to learn. We want them to move. We want them to be successful. We don't want obesity. We don't want cardiovascular disease. We want our students forty-five minutes. So I'm asking you, the board, Ms. Sayavedra, please do not take away those forty-five minutes daily from our students. Thank you.
Ross Moore. Ross Moore.
Board President Iribali, Board members, Ms. Sayavedra. My name is Ross Moore. I'm the president of the El Paso American Federation of Teachers. First off, on behalf of my membership, on behalf of the SLPs and DIAx, and on a personal note, I want to thank trustee, Board President Iribali and trustee Hanani for the efforts they brought in to right the wrong being done to my members and your employees by HR, talent acquisition, and admin. It was tantamount to wage theft. And it continues. It was tantamount to wage theft, and it continued despite Ms. Sayavedra saying, "Stop it," all the way up through a meeting at 8:30 this morning. I want to thank you again for stepping forward and really righting a wrong. This did damage. It seriously has damaged trust and confidence, in particular in admin, but in particular HR, and very candidly, it speaks volumes. Second item, and I do want to say the next mark on the wall we have is the 15 September pay voucher, and as Thomas Jefferson said, "Let the eyes of the vigilant never be closed." That's our next mark on the wall to make sure that comes through correctly. As far as openings versus vacancies, this morning's count, 160 openings posted on the EPISD wage, EPISD HR page. Of those, 116 were from elementary schools, an increase of four over last week, middle school, 19, an increase of three, and 25 at high school level, a decrease, nice, of 13. I'm going to ask trustees, the past 30 days and honestly, the past six to eight months, based on what's transpired over that time, I'm going to ask you to rethink that laissez-faire, that's an economics term, laissez-faire role that the Texas Lone Star Governance Program assigns you to. You need to be engaged. You owe it to your employees, you owe it to your students, and you owe it to this community that elected you all. You're not bystanders. You can't be. And last but not least, Ms. Sayavedra, please rethink your relationship with the unions. Thank you very much.
Ursula Martinez. Ursula Martinez.
Hello, my name is Ursula Martinez and I am a speech-language pathologist at MacArthur. This is my 20th year as an SLP with EPISD. I have been loyal to EPISD and especially the students that I have and currently do serve. It is my greatest pleasure to see my students' language, articulation and fluency skills improve to the point of no longer needing speech therapy. Unfortunately, it does not seem that EPISD is loyal to their SLPs. At the end of last year, HR set up a meeting with little notice to speak about our pay. Many SLPs, including myself, could not make that meeting because we had ARDs scheduled. Being that it was the end of the school year, it was impossible to reschedule these meetings. HR pulled the wool over our eyes. They made it seem like we were getting a raise, but that was not the case. They only restructured us in name. We moved up a pay scale, but they had no intention in giving us a raise. They were willing to commit wage theft, but with many thanks to President Iribali and Mrs. Hannity, they would not succeed. Talk still has us wondering about our pay, though. I still don't know how much I'm going to get paid. Each year, our workload gets progressively worse, more paperwork gets added to our plates. Last year, my caseload was at 85. It's currently at 108 as of this morning, with 37 of those being speech-only, and more are registering every day. I have an assistant three times a week. MacArthur's self-contained units and collaborative units are packed. I have been under so much stress. When I was on the phone with my special ed supervisor, she was so worried about me that she was ready to drive to my campus to make sure I was okay because I broke down while on the phone with her. Some of my colleagues have even higher caseloads than me and they have no assistant to help them, or they have an assistant that's only once a week or twice a week. The national average caseload for an SLP is between 45 to 55 students. I'll remind you, I have 108. SLPs are drowning and it's time for EPISD to finally show their loyalty towards us. I always felt that when those in the ivory towers have left the schools and they forget what it's like to work directly with the students and parents, they forget what is needed to complete a school year in compliance. We still have many vacancies. EPISD needs to give the SLPs that have been loyal to them a fighting chance. Help us recruit new SLPs and help retain the SLPs that are currently in EPISD. With a move from 106 to 100 pay scale with the pay that comes with a 107, they can do that. Show your loyalty to your employees, EPISD, because we have been loyal to you and our students. Thank you.
Norma De La Rosa. Norma De La Rosa.
Good afternoon, Mr. Iribali, members of the board, Ms. Sayavedra. I am Norma De La Rosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. I have had numerous calls from teachers across the district who are currently working on campuses that still have swamp coolers. This year has been an exceptional year where we have seen since May, temperatures in the 100 degrees for 38 consecutive days, temperatures of 107 degrees and higher. The week of July 31st, teachers returned to duty with temperatures ranging from 100 to 107 degrees. Students returned to class with temperatures ranging from 98 to 109 degrees. This week, we will see three days of 100 to 102 degrees. Yet many of these teachers and students are sitting in classrooms where the average temperature is 80 degrees or higher. Yet we expect our teachers and students to sit in these rooms with swamp coolers that don't cool and will definitely cool less with the present humidity due to the rainstorms last night. I was forwarded an email with information that came from the district entitled "Extreme Temperature Campus Procedures" that begins with, quote, "The month of August is typically one of the hottest in El Paso, coupled with the highest levels of humidity." It further states, "These high conditions create a challenge for the evaporative cooling systems or swamp coolers that are present at our schools. Our maintenance department has been working diligently to ensure that our air conditioning systems are working to the best possible capability." That is laughable, as we know full well that it doesn't matter what you do. Crack open the windows, but many classrooms now have no windows or have been permanently closed. But we have to keep the doors closed, keep pumps on overnight, et cetera. But the district is not allowing teachers to take fans or portable coolers to help with cooling the rooms. Why? Here's why. It adds to the electrical load and impairs the efficiency of the cooling system. A system, by the way, that does not and is not working in those buildings. Teachers are being asked not to deviate from the heating and cooling procedures without prior approval from the Department of School Leadership and Maintenance and Operations. This is a concern that has been brought to the district and the board's attention many times before, and it is imperative that something is done and done quickly. As I understand, some campuses will begin that transition to refrigerated air, yet that will not solve the current issue. I am requesting that teachers be allowed to bring fans into their classrooms to help alleviate the unbearable conditions in those rooms, or do we wait until a student or teacher experiences a health issue in the classroom due to the temperature in those rooms? Thank you.
Agnes Poletti.
Good evening, Board President Iribal, Board members and Superintendent Sayavedra. My name is Agnes Poletti and I am a diagnostician with the district. I am here voicing the concerns of other diagnosticians regarding what was voted on and passed at the June 20th board meeting, since it seems it is not being implemented. First, I would like to thank those of you who have attempted to intervene on our behalf. Unfortunately, it seems an executive director in Human Resources may not be heeding your words. The board approved moving the diagnosticians to the 105 pay scale, and we have in fact been placed on a 105 pay scale, but in name only. Our title was placed under the 105 pay scale solely as a token gesture without the pay that justly comes with it. Even as of this morning, this executive director explained three things. One, our diagnosticians are getting a 2% raise from the midpoint, just like some employees in the district. Two, we're also getting paid a bit more, but that is because five workdays were added to our contract. Third, we're getting equity pay. As per Human Resources, this means they did a market analysis of what diagnosticians get paid based on years of experience in our neighboring districts and adjusted our pay according to their findings. Also, per Human Resources, they do this every few years. However, nowhere in the conversation the HR representatives had with several diagnosticians was it stated that we were getting an increase in pay due to being moved to a higher pay scale. One thing, though, some of these diagnosticians were asked if we would prefer to stay at the 104 pay scale, only adding insult to injury. Towards in this situation, this information has not been disseminated among all diagnosticians. This lack of transparency can be clearly seen in the way an employee's daily pay rate is calculated, making the determination of equity pay impossible for anyone outside of Human Resources to quantify. Furthermore, is it common practice to have employees sign their contracts without knowing the compensation plan for the year? Diagnosticians' contracts were to be signed by May 31st, and almost three months later, we have yet to know what our salaries will be for this school year. Superintendent, Board member, Board president and Board members, the only reason we fought so hard to be moved up in pay scales was because of the pay that came with that movement. We are simply asking to be compensated fairly in relation to what the other districts in the area compensate their employees. We have confidence in you, the board, and we ask that you please do right by us. Thank you.
John Oliver Melby.
Good afternoon, Board President. Oh, he's not here. Board members and Superintendent Sayavard. I, uh, I've been in special ed since I was, well, I was in special ed when I was four years old, and I'm still in special ed. My name's John Melby. I'm an educational diagnostician with the district. As you've probably heard, diagnosticians have received an increase in pay level without an increase in wages, according to Human Resources. I want to thank all of you up there who have worked on our behalf. But I want to, I can't read this thing. I've been a diagnostician for 20 years now. Prior to that, I was a special ed counselor for nine years. Back in 2002, the associate superintendent informed us that they were going to replace the special ed counselors with the MSW social workers. And so, most of the special ed counselors went on to become counselors in the schools. I chose to go back to school, get my diagnostician certification, and so I became a DiAG. Now, when I was a special ed counselor, my pay level was 102. Diagnosticians were pay level 102. The diagnosticians had a $4,000 stipend, okay? So when I became a diagnostician, they lowered my salary by $4,000 to make room for the $4,000 stipend, okay? Two years later, diagnostician's stipend went up to $6,000. So they lowered my salary another $2,000 to make room for the stipend. And so, I went to the superintendent at the time, and he informed me that he checked my pay, and I received $1.28 more in my paycheck, and so therefore I didn't lose any money on the deal. So...
Time.
When I became a diagnostician, I thought, "I'll go back to school and become a DiAG, and then I'll be at the same pay level and get an additional $4,000." Boy, was I wrong.
Thank you, sir. Your time, three minutes is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Myrna Vargas. Myrna Vargas.
Good evening, Board President Iribali, Iribal, sorry, I can't say Iro. Board members and Superintendent Sayavedra, my name is Myrna Vargas. I am also an educational diagnostician, and again, thank you for all your hard work and everything that you do for us. However, we are here once again advocating for our position in salaries and asking for a real sense of communication from our leadership. There has been too much speculation and misunderstanding as to how diagnosticians and speech pathologists will be compensated. Days were added to our contracts, but a clear understanding of how that translates to our paycheck is still not clear. The board did vote to move us up a level, and while this is not a promotion, the understanding was that we were to receive a pay advancement in our grade. Otherwise, what was the point of moving us? The move up to a 105 was approved, so please explain how we are not being compensated accordingly. The optics are that the pay is determined arbitrarily. I ask for transparency and communication because that is what we deserve to know as employees of EPISD. At this point, diagnosticians have not been told in writing when we are to work our five days. A colleague has found the information online, however, nothing has been provided in writing. Please make communication and transparency an expectation. Thank you.
Colette Bauer.
Colette Bauer.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Sayavedra. On June 10th, 2023, more than half of the diagnosticians and SLPs united to bring your attention to our concerns regarding compensation and pay scales. On June 20th, 2023, the board approved to change the pay grades of the diagnosticians from a 104 to 105, and the speech-language pathologist and school psychologist from a 105 to 106. The diagnosticians, SLPs and school psychologists were excited and thrilled to have gotten the acknowledgement for all the time working with EPISD students, parents and staff. Then, on July 29th, 2023, many SLPs and diagnosticians contacted the executive director of Talent Acquisition and Personnel Administration to have the new compensation explained to them as to how the new pay grade move would affect their pay for the 2023-24 school year. The executive director of HR on various occasions said that the pay grade move was not a promotion or pay raise. It was stated it was simply a reclassification, and all would receive a 2% raise from the midpoint added to their daily rate. This action or words of action caused anguish and confusion, as this is clearly not what the Board of Trustees approved on June 20th, 2023. We, the diagnosticians, at this point, we, the diagnosticians, want to thank board members for intervening and rectifying the unjust interpretation of the board-approved pay grades by HR. Through our federation, Mr. Iribalde has assured the diagnosticians and the SLPs that we would be receiving our compensation of the board-approved pay grades, and we want to thank you for advocating for your employees. Even though we have gotten this guarantee that for the pay grades of 105 and the SLPs and school psychologists 106, nothing has been put in writing to ease our concerns and mend the trust that was broken by HR. We are asking that this new guarant- concerns and mend the trust that was broken by HR. We are asking that this new guarantee be put in writing, and all parties involved get a written notification explaining the move in the pay and the new daily rates all will be paid. Had this compensation package been put in writing in a timely fashion, all this confusion, anguish, and mistrust could have been avoided. We want to thank you all for intervening and not allowing the misinterpretation of HR be the source of wage theft to your employees. We ask that you please have HR put in writing the compensation package for us as a means to build the trust within EPISD and its employees. Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm going to move this down. I'm a little short. My name is Catherine Viegas, and today I am speaking on the equity audit. I am a BUI, I'm a proud BUI alumni from the class of 2019. Although I am proud, I still recognize the lack of investment that plagued our halls. As a student, I witnessed various circumstances that portrayed inequity, like my cross-country uniforms that were paper-thin from being over 15 years old. I compared the cracks on our walls to the walls of every other school in the district that we competed at. Our HP laptops, at the time, to the Macs that all the other students from the rest of the districts, from the rest of the schools in the districts had. Our students are artists, pioneers, and entrepreneurs. We are promise and potential. Those hallways hold, our hallways of BUI High School hold a history of discrimination and neglect, a lack of investment in our buildings and our programs and our students. For me and every other student there, it was the equivalent of starting a race with our shoes tied together. We are not asking for anything absurd. Our students deserve equity and respect. My pride comes from my cross-country coaches who paid out of pocket and my theater teacher who paid out of pocket as well for our props and our costumes. My pride come from the boys and girls who made the school what it was, regardless of the circumstances we were given and the investments that we were not. My hope is that my younger siblings will be able to have an equitable learning environment that reflects their potential and their greatness. Our students should not have to leave their community to find the programs, equity, access, and opportunities that they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. My name is Hilda Viegas. I'm here on behalf of Familias Unidas por la Educación and the BUI feeder pattern. And this is in reference to the equity audit. We're concerned that the important factors are being overlooked as you choose today the company that will conduct the equity study. What is their experience working with Spanish speakers, immigrant poor students? What is their experience working with border towns, cities? There is a large number of people that do not know the difference between a Hispanic student and an immigrant poor student. It's not just race, but it's a class issue. It's a national origin issue. It's a language issue. It's a mobility issue. That's concerning, given to us that Four Corners does not show that expertise. And it's also concerning, given the circumstances. EPISD has a history, well documented, of discrimination against Mexican-American students. The Alvarado versus EPISD case, where a judge found that the district used to be divided intentionally between American schools north of the tracks and Mexican schools, which is our schools south of the tracks. 1976, history of intentional maintaining inferior facilities for Mexican-American students. The BUI cheating scandal, and the most recent 2018-2019 school closures. And where EPISD closed various schools, and they did not consider that children were being moved temporarily out of public housing, and they also didn't consider the real sites of Douglas Elementary that ultimately determined which school to close in Barrio, in Barrio Chamisal. The district believed that Douglas sat on 12 acres of land. The district was wrong. The county appraisal district now says that Douglas sits on 5.57 acres of land. We felt that this was discriminatory, and we filed a lawsuit. Familias Unidas filed a lawsuit claiming the 2018-2019 school closure was discriminatory. EPISD tried to have a case dismissed, arguing they did not discriminate, but a federal judge said no, because there was evidence of discrimination. And this is what the judge wrote on the opinion. The court finds that Familias Unidas has produced evidence that is sufficiently detailed to establish a genuine issue concerning every essential element of the case. When viewing these facts in the light most favorable to Familias Unidas, drawing of all inferences in this favor, this court finds the allegations of EPISD's historic discrimination creates a genuine issue for trial. We settled. We didn't go to trial. But this is an opinion that clearly states that there was a history of discrimination, and we need a company that can actually recognize this and address the issues that are plaguing our communities. We need for you to take the appropriate time and consideration when procuring the company that's going to do this equity study.
Thank you.
If it's in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's going to wrap up our public forum, which brings us to item number six. And before we get there, for the public and trustees, for item 6K13, there is an up, well, not an update, but a, an item was listed incorrectly, so it's now going to read, if you guys are there. Yeah. So it's going to read approval to award equity. Yes?
I apologize, President Irovalle. I believe that there may have been somebody overlooked on the list, so I want to make sure that we call their name one more time, just to make sure that they're not in the audience, so that they get their opportunity for public comment. Briseda Acevedo?
We apologize for that.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Thank you. So I was, I had everything planned. First of all, good evening, Board. Good evening, Superintendent. Good evening, employees and parents and teachers. As I sit here and I listen to person after person, I become more and more disheartened as a parent of what we have going on in our district. I will quickly follow up and touch up on something for SLPs. My daughter was helped by these wonderful individuals, and the fact that they have to ask for compensation, a fair compensation, it does disappoint me, because at the end of the day, you don't owe it to them. You owe it to our kids. My kids succeeded because of these people, and when that is overlooked, you are overlooking my children. Number two, when it comes to PE, you cannot take that away from them. All I've heard from you all in meetings at Tom Lee, it's the whole child. Well, the whole child has different types of components to it: mental health, physical health, cognitive health, academic development, identity development, social, emotional learning. When you're taking PE, you're actually hurting the whole child. That PE time, it helps with everything that comes in together to constitute what a true student can grow to be successfully. It reduces anxiety, depression. It aids in strong bones and muscles. It reduces risks of any developing health conditions that may be serious. I also understand that the CDC states it should be six-to-17-year-olds should have at least 60 minutes or more of physical activity daily. I also know that to fit into compliance with TEA, there are certain numbers that have to go ahead and be accounted for and looked at. When it comes to minutes, and I keep hearing minutes and minutes and minutes, I would like for you all to be transparent. When you all speak about minutes, tell us what minutes you are planning to have as a district. Tell us what minutes TEA is asking to be in compliance, because I hear so much that's very great, but nothing as direct as a parent and as you all to our children. Quickly, I do have one minute left. I, you know, I understand that we had a one-on-one, Ms. Sayyavedra. I appreciate that. One-on-one conversation. My question to you is, every, and to you all, every, every time we get a new superintendent, it's, they come in, they do things, and we end up being followers of the district. How about for once, we become leaders, and we look into our own to actually ask SLPs, regular teachers, PE teachers, what we can do in every campus that has worked to actually come up with a plan that is ours and that maybe other districts can follow? Very quickly, when it comes to this about, Socorro did it. Sir, I know you went into our meetings and you said that. TEA said so. That's not going to cut it. As a parent, I want more. I want the information that we're being given as expectations that we're expected to follow as students, as parents, as teachers. It's all about transparency. And when it comes to being able to speak up as a parent, and you did apologize, Ms., Ms. Sayyavedra, Dr. Sayyavedra.
Time.
I will repeat this. Who do we go to when we're worried, when we're intimidated? And you are the person who holds this district together.
Time.
When we're being told that we can go. I will end it with this. My kids, again, were born and raised in El Paso, in this city. My kids were born and raised into this district. You came in. Help us make this great.
Thank you very much. Your time's up. Okay, so that is now going to bring us to the consent agenda. And again, trustees, item 6K13, there is a correction, so it's going to read approval to award equity audit and action plan, RFP number 23-095, in the requested amount of $135,040. So the amount is being corrected to $135,040. So before I ask if there's any items that want to be pulled, I do have a speaker on six collectively, and that's Mr. Ross Moore.
Board President Irovalle, Board Members, Ms. Sayyavedra, my name is Ross Moore, President of El Paso AFT. And this may have changed with the change you guys just made, but I tallied up the amount of money excluding healthcare that is being spent on the consent agenda. $11,280,407 and change. Okay, that's a lot of money. Now, what I'm about to say is Mr. Irovalle's fault. Thank you. That great meeting you ran up, had set up at Tom Lee jogged my memory on something, and I hope the other trustees follow suit. That was a great community meeting, and it was well done and helped clear the air on a lot of things. Okay, what, on all these things you're buying with this, or programs you're bringing in, what are the metrics of success? Not, and I'm not saying was it part of what's needed, what are the metrics of success for each of these items and like that? And these need to be definable, tangible, and measurable, not and not test scores. How do you mark success? What I also see and hear is contracting out a lot of functions. You know, I kind of did a brief review of positions, and I looked at things like curriculum sped in like that. And on the academics and school leadership side of the house, you've got a whole lot of really talented people that are capable of performing the functions that are being contracted out. I'd ask that you kind of review that. Lastly, could some of this money have then been put into turning the 2% raise into maybe a 3% raise, maybe four? And just as an oh-by-the-bye, 2% does not equal 2%. For example, when you look through the teacher scales, only five of the 31-year groups on the scale are above 2%. When you look at the average of all teacher raises, it was 1.48%. And some of these positions, and this tends to go with the older employees, the long-term employees, was down to 0.97%. So I'd ask, please, use the metrics and be good stewards of this money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So at this time, I'd like to ask trustees if there's any items that they'd like to take off of consent. So, trustee Hernandez?
13K.
What was that?
13K.
Okay, thank you. Is it? No, there, nothing? 6K14. Okay, I have speakers on 6K2 and 6K3, so I'm going to read it back. Let me know if there's any changes. I have 6K2, 6K3, 6K7, 6K13, and 6K14. Is that correct? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with pulling those items that I just called out?
So moved.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by trustee Hernandez, a second by trustee Acevedo to approve the consent agenda with those items removed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Item passes unanimously. So that's going to bring us to item 6K2, which I have a speaker on, and that is Mr. Ross Moore.
Board President Irovalle, Board Members, Ms. Sayyavedra, my name is Ross Moore, President of El Paso AFT. TELSSP services. That befuddles me. Now, right now, technically, you're staffed at the correct level of LSPs, but this kind of looks like a patch to cover shortages or extensive oversized caseloads. You know, there's reasons they're leaving, and there's reasons people aren't coming on board. What I'd ask that you do, because this is not good for kids, having a real human not plugging a kid down at a computer and saying, figure out your, you know, what's going on in your soul or universe or like that. That doesn't work. That's, so if this is an emergency measure, I'd point out, Robert Heinlein once said, there's nothing, I hope this is not permanent. I hope this is a one-off, and I hope you rethink it, but there is nothing in this world so permanent as a temporary emergency. I would also point out, you need to look at autism specialists. District used to have six, which cover, were set out by areas and covered the town. Four of them quit this summer or retired this summer. You've got two left, and, for example, the West Side and most of the Northeast aren't covered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do I have a motion on item 6K2? So I'll make the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by trustee Irovalle, a second by trustee Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in opposition? So that's going to pass unanimously, 7-0, and that's going to take us to 6K3. I have three speakers on this item, starting with Sheri Ryder.
Good evening, Board President Irovalle, Board Members and Superintendent Sayyavedra. My name is Sheri Ryder, and I'm a proud speech pathologist with EPISD. Stepping Stones Group is an online speech therapy company based out of Atlanta, Georgia. It states in the summary for purchase that this company will be used when SLPs are out for FMLA or there is not an available SLP at a school as well as for compensatory speech therapy. I take a number of issues with this. Number one, when I was out on FMLA last school year, this company did not provide services to my students. I have to provide the compensatory services for my students. Number two, we are still cleaning up the huge mess this company made last school year. Services were not completed, documentation was not adequate, and we had to use our current SLP assistance to facilitate this. To top it all off, this SLP had no experience working in a school setting. How effective is this? This company is not even in El Paso. I am concerned that this company took $200,000 from EPISD, and really, what did they do? As far as the SLPs are concerned, not much. Traveling? They are an online vendor. Why are they traveling? Why do we need to pay this when EPISD doesn't even give us mileage? The district is currently out of compliance in all areas of special education. A telecompany will not fix this. The only thing that will fix this mess is to pay higher wages to attract and retain The only thing that will fix this mess is to pay higher wages to attract and retain the special education personnel, to include teachers, SLPs, OTs, PTs, Diags, et cetera. We, at one point, tried to make a solution for those of us already working, but the district does not do teleservices. Why are they promoting the use of teleservice in this instance, but not for us to use? I urge you all, please, do not accept the approval of First Amendment to vendor contract and option to extend Esser monies. Invest this money in those SLPs that are being forced to do this above and beyond their own responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryder. The second speaker I have is Mr. Ross Moore.
Board President Iribali, board members, Ms. Saavedra. My name is Ross Moore, President of El Paso AFT. Right now, you have 18 out of 36 SLPs in this district. That's not good. And it looks like this teleservice, and again, I don't understand the logic behind tele, speech-language pathology, and my kid's an OT. I don't understand tele-OT. That makes no sense. It's a face-to-face, hands-on process. There's a shortage, you've got high caseloads. This is based on what a smart person before me and a smart person after me is going to say. This doesn't work, okay? And it's not going to work, and it's not going to help kids. It's going to be bad for special needs kids. This is not a wise solution. So I'm going to yield to smart people behind me, but remind you again, as Robert Heinlein said, yeah, you've got an emergency here, you've got to spend on buying this company. There is nothing in this world so permanent as a temporary emergency, and I would hate to see this pattern continue in the future in EPISD. It's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And the final speaker I have on this item is Ms. Cameron Sierra.
Hello again. Good evening, President Iribali, school board members, and Superintendent Saavedra. My name is Cameron Sierra. I am a proud speech-language pathologist in EPISD. I'm concerned about the request to approve the vendor contract for special education-related services to the Stepping Stones Group LLC, which is an out-of-town business. The money is coming from local funds, not to exceed $200,000. It is noted that the fiscal impact and cost is immediate and of note, not applicable for the future and ongoing. That's what the descriptor says. Except, this is a request to extend the contract that was created in June of 2022 because of our shortage. And clearly, it continues to be present in the future, and it is ongoing. This didn't work last year, and in fact, we were told that the district was going to head in a different direction for this year. Clearly, this is not the case, when seeing that they would rather invest this money into people from out of town who cannot build relationships with students and the families from a distance the way that we can, as was discussed just a minute ago, and the way that local vendors may be able to when needed. Yes, there is a clear and evident shortage of SLPs across the city, but this was not the solution last year, and messes were also created. That money alone could be half of what is needed to move the SLPs to a 107 and entice other local SLPs to jump onboard with us. Additionally, there is a notation that the purpose is to continue to provide speech and occupational therapy services to students as required in their IEPs, when staff is on extended leave through FMLA, or when there are vacancy positions. We had so many vacancies last school year with no services provided for speech therapy, and many others where no coverage was provided during FMLA, which meant additional compensatory time owed at other campuses as well. That is in addition to many SLPs being spread thin over several campuses. Compensatory time is still currently owed at many of the campuses now, where there are currently 90-plus students, and the SLP is expected to keep up with all of it. Why is this fair? If they had the contract last year, why was the comp time not completed? And where did that money go? Invest that money in us, not in a telepractice model that they wouldn't even allow us to do here locally. We should be getting paid our worth for as much as we do and what we bring into the district. Clearly, the UTEP students figured that out on their own. Our only hope to have future UTEP cohorts to want to come to EPISD is to increase the pay to a 107 to make it worth their while and choose us instead of the medical options and/or other districts. So please do not approve that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra. Those are all the speakers on this item. If there's no questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the First Amendment to the vendor contract and the option to extend the award for Esser.
Just a point of clarification. I'm sorry, I thought we approved this already, because...
No, I pulled...
You pulled it?
Yeah, I pulled items.
I thought it was just, okay.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Trustee Hernandez, go ahead.
I move that the board approve the First Amendment to the vendor contract and the option to extend the award for Esser, Special Education Related Services, RFP 22-041, to the Stepping Stones Group LLC, in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the period of July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2024, as presented.
Before we vote on this, can I ask a question? Can somebody just speak to the ability to fill vacancies specifically with this money internally versus taking this out to a vendor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Collins is going to tell me I need to have a second before we can do discussion.
Yes, please.
Yep, so if I can get a second, and then we can go into discussion? So I have the motion by trustee Hernandez, the second by trustee Call, and then now, Ms. Saavedra.
I just wanted to comment on where we are currently with our SLPs. It's my understanding that we've recommended four, and there's five additional SLPs that are pending. They're asking for this particular contract so that when we do have shortages, we can fill the gap. I know that the HR department is working diligently to recruit and retain our SLPs. You've heard from a number of them that there are still questions about compensation.
So a clarifying question. If, I think, maybe somebody else on the board can help me recall this information, but when we were here in August, sorry, in June, we had the discussion about moving to the 107 pay scale. And if I recall correctly, that was going to be brought back to us in August. I don't know, I want to make sure that I'm recalling that correctly. I know that's not the discussion today. I know there have been some offline conversation about what that compensation would look like, but could we get some clarification on why that wasn't brought to us today?
We went back to, I don't believe that there was any communication that we would bring this specific item back in August. I know that there were several discussions about going back and looking at a number of different, I think it was the SLPs, the diagnosticians, there were some coaching stipends that were in question. We talked about the fact that the staff would continue to work through that and bring it back to the board at a later date. I know that I've been working very closely with the HR department to get a sense of what the communication has been to the diagnosticians, to the SLPs, and to the LSSPs, you know, about their salary, the increase, the movement from 105 to 106, and so forth. And so we've been working through that process. We were not prepared to bring a new package to the board in August. So that's my response to that particular question. I know that we were still looking at all of the various options, but we have been communicating individually with them so that they could understand what the current state of affairs is and what their salary is as of, you know, now. That doesn't preclude an ongoing conversation so that we can continue to bring the board back any additional information.
So can we have some sort of a commitment as to when that could possibly be brought back to us in terms of a hard date? And I say that because it's hard for us to be having conversations about temporary employees when we don't have even a timeline on what we're doing to recruit and retain our permanent employees.
I think it would be an acceptable request for us to bring that back to the board in September for a discussion.
Is it appropriate to table this until then?
If that's the board's desire, but that's at the pleasure of the board.
Do you have a motion, a second?
Yeah, so I mean, we would have to take up the motion first, and what I would say is I think that's going to set off a slurry of questions, so trustee Call, I saw your light come on, so we'll start with you.
Yeah, I said this in June, I guess it was, but I'm committed. I'm committed to this process. I wish that we could have a package here today. I'm sure there's reasons that that didn't happen, but I'm committed to this. And I want to make this right. And trustee Hernandez, I appreciate the thought to table this until next month so that we can sort of hold the, you know, some feets to the fire here. But I'm worried, well, let me ask this question of the superintendent. Would, if we don't approve this item today, would that result in main time in the next month, in other words, of kids not receiving services?
I would say that potentially it could, but given that we would bring this back in September, as I think that we could bridge the gap, so it wouldn't be a long-term piece. So, I mean, again, if you want to table so that you have more information, you all can certainly consider that.
So, we're not totally sure, but it's probable that kids would not receive services through...
There's always a potential, because, I mean, we don't have all of our vacancies filled, even though we do have four recommended and five pending. You know, to get those people onboarded, to get them acclimated to their, so...
If I may, trustee Call, I think, and I just want to be clear on the conversations. I know several members have been here today to thank the advocacy from trustee Hernandez and myself. To be very clear, all I did was ask staff what they're doing, and then relay that message over in maybe a more clear way that was, you know, accepted in a much better way. So what I do see is this district is moving in a step forward. I didn't pick up a phone and Diana flipped a switch and changed the way we were proceeding. These steps were already being taken. The SLPs were moved up to that ranking, and they were given that 2% off the midpoint to that respective increase that we approved last time. So I do know that they're actively working on it. I've talked to Ms. Cortez and Ms. Saavedra together on Friday last week, where this is something that we will be actively working on. I'm happy to have a commitment of September. I think we can get a good response. I'm with trustee Call. I don't want to maybe have an opportunity that a couple of kids miss out on these services in the interim, when I already have the superintendent committed to having these conversations and moving forward. So personally, that's where I'm at. I think it's, we have that commitment, we've built that relationship with the superintendent, and we can continue that dialogue as we move forward. That would just be respectfully what I ask. Dr. Osvaldo?
I guess, so you said that there are five vacancies that we're about to fill, and then four are recommended? Out of how many?
Do we have the vacancies? Patty, can you give me the total number? No, that would be, yeah, so if we have four that have already been recommended, so the five pending would cover the seven that are still remaining? Okay. So there's only five pending, so that would leave two additional vacancies?
Yeah, and I'm sorry for just throwing this on there, just with the nature of the conversation, but while you're looking at that, Patty, I guess my worry with this, you have a number?
Seven vacancies.
Seven vacancies, and then you have five that are about to be filled, so you have two. And...
Five pending is...
Okay, just for the nature of where I'm going with this, we could look at the number a little deeper. I'm just putting Patty on the spot, so I'm sorry for that. But I guess if we are going to cover the seven, and there's only going to be two pending, I think in the month that's left, there might not be many disruptions since we're about to onboard five people, and we're going to have two vacancies left.
So there's actually four recommended? And it's my understanding, Ms. Cortez, five vacancies. Can you step up to the podium, please?
Patty Cortez with Human Resources. So I did state there are seven vacancies and two that are future-filled, which means that they have a future fill date. So you're really dealing with the seven vacancies.
So it is seven total vacancies? Even though we've recommended four people, there are still seven pending vacancies?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the clarity I was trying to get to.
Okay, so my, from everything that everyone has been saying today during the various public comment that we've had throughout the beginning and on each item, one of the things that I think that really stands out to me is that there was something that, a deal was reached today around 8:30 in the morning. It's fresh. You're dealing with it, we're going to come back in September. I understand that, but I think getting something and writing ASAP to the SLPs is really important, if we could do that. But then, the other thing that concerns me about approving this item, it's up to $200,000, and to move them from the different pay grades, we were told in June, it was $400,000. And so I'm worried that if we commit to this, it's going to detract from the goal of getting them over to the level that they requested in June, because half of that money is going to go to this. And so that's why it's really hard for me to support this. And I'd rather, I think there's sufficient information that has been given to us to kind of go through the next month and then see where we're at. That way, we could have all the resources available to take care of the people that we have now, instead of kind of using this money for this.
And really quick, Ms. Aguirre, I do just want to say something, that we did ask Ms. Aguirre to pull the information about how much that cost would be for a compensation packet, but after the meeting, I know that there were several conversations, that that process is a little bit more convoluted in moving them to the midpoint, that 2% off the midpoint, than the equity adjustments that happen on top of it. So that does inflate the cost, and so that, I don't know if you have those numbers today. If you don't, I think that's what the board really needs come September, of what actual cost is versus projections as we look at 107s in that respective field, and then what that equity adjustment's going to need to be made on top of what you guys have already done for the increase to 106.
Martha Aguirre, Chief Financial Officer. I don't have that information with me, but I will provide that for the next meeting. And I wanted to mention that the contract in question is funded with Esser funds, so we are talking to different funding sources.
And is it correct that it's as needed? So if it impacts five kids, and that's $10,000, that's what we'll be paying out, not the $200,000? So there will be no impact, and we may spend less as we fill these positions? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, but we can get that clarified.
So, I mean, I would just share that there appears to be several questions. So again, Mr. Iribali, if there's a motion and a second, I don't know, Ms. Collins, does that vote have to be done? And then if there's a request to amend or table with a new motion, then that's possible after you secure an initial vote, correct?
I apologize, I didn't hear the first part of the question.
Well, there's been a motion and a second.
Yes.
So the question is, the process from this point forward, if the board wants to consider tabling the...
We would take the motion if it fails, we would take another motion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So then I'll take that motion, and we can see if this is resolved. So I have my motion and my second. I do not remember where they came from, but all in favor?
Well, Mr. President, if I don't, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If this is from a different source of funding, then that $400,000 is from where? And why are we having to hold up this motion when these funds are from Esser, and the others of the $400,000 come from a different funding source?
That's correct. The salaries for the positions in question would be out of the General Operating Fund. And this contract is proposed to be funded through Esser. And this contract is proposed to be funded through Esser.
Well then, we're talking about two different pots of money, so why would we hold up this motion?
Actually, I think we may need some clarification on that, Ms. Aguirre, because the item does, I see what you're talking about, it mentions Esser, but it also relates to local funds not to exceed $200,000. So if you could clarify that for us?
And, and we're not holding up the motion, we're, we're about to vote, no? Yeah? Okay.
It's, RFP was put out specifically with Esser, but then this amendment appears to be out of local.
I stand corrected. So when the RFP was issued, it was with Esser Funds. This current year that's being requested is with local funds.
Thank you for the clarification. So it will, it does come from our local budget?
Okay, so then I'll take the motion, all in favor? Vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All in opposition?
No.
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 Okay, so is that, if I tell me I have this right, it's four, three, the ayes are Mr. Call, myself, Ms. Hernandez, and Ms. Beals, and the noes are Ms. Han... Other way around, I have, Ms. Beals is the no, got you. Okay, so then that's four no, which would be trustee Cuellar, trustee Osavero, trustee Beals, and trustee Hanani, correct?
And I have a motion.
Fails, and then the motion from Dr. Osavero.
Valerie, did you vote no?
Yes. Yes, you did.
I, I moved to table item 6K3 to September 23, regular board meeting.
Second.
Can I, can I make an amendment on that?
A friendly amendment, of course.
Can we add the compensation package that we just discussed during this conversation to that motion, please?
So I understood that we would come back to the board with the work that we've done for compensation in those job roles, which would clarify bringing this particular contract back to the board, right? All right, I just wanna make sure I understand.
So moved?
Okay, perfect. So I have a motion from Dr. Osavero and a second from trustee Cuellar, is that correct? Perfect, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? That unanimous we passed a 7-0, and that will now take us to item eight, nope, I lied. Thank you. 6K7. I believe that was pulled by Dr. Osavero.
Dr. Carmona and Mr. Verdusco, can you all step up to the podium, podium to respond to any questions?
Good evening, President Irovali, for members...
Hold on, did you have some questions first? Okay.
No, he can introduce himself, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Verdusco, I'm sorry.
Good evening, President Irovali, for members, Superintendent Ayvedra, Manny Verdusco, Assistant Superintendent for Information Security and Technology.
Good evening, Board President Irovali, members of the board, Ms. Ayvedra, Martha Carmona, Deputy Superintendent.
Okay, thank you for, for answering some of the questions that I have. And I really appreciate you sending out the, the board response, including it in our packet a few weeks ago, and kinda breaking down this cost analysis. So just wanted to thank you for doing those really nice columns on the pros and the cons and all of that. Since June, when we first learned that this was happening, I had a lot of heartburn, and I expressed it at the time. And seeing these numbers hasn't really made me change my mind very much. I, I worry that, as a board, we've adopted our, our strategic levers, and I'm worried that this is not going to fall in with those strategic levers in delivering the education that we really want for all the students at EPISD. And, and I think as I went through the document on the Chromebooks versus Apple, whether it's a MacBook or it's an iPad, a lot of it just came down to cost and to adult issues. Adult issues being it's easier to service Chromebooks versus a Mac, it's really annoying, it's a headache. But that comes at the expense of the children, and that is what really concerns me. And so, what, is there any educational motivation for you to move toward Chromebooks, other than they're just easier to handle, and they're cheaper?
Yes, sir. A lot of the initiatives for our curriculum academy that's presented by Dr. Kennedy, are, most of those applications are cloud-based, and actually proven to work, we are utilizing the Chromebooks. I think that's an alignment that, that we're making. Again, one of the other things is the operational cost in, in, again, maintaining those devices and making sure they're ready to minimize instructional downtime. I think that's one of our goals, to mature, if there's an issue with a student's device, that we'll be able to swap it right away and get that student back to instruction. That's, I think, one of our main goals as well, that we're trying to do, gonna sign off the cost. So I would just wanna emphasize that early college high schools, PTEC, CCTEs, and specialized programs will continue to utilize a laptop device.
And, and the other thing that I, I noticed is that the RAM on the Chromebooks is half the RAM that is included on iPads and, and MacBooks. And so with the programs that Dr. Kennedy is bringing in, into the curriculum, I, I'm worried that we're gonna also give students really slow devices, and they're not gonna be able to operate those, because with the RAM that the Chromebook has, it's just a very slow device. I think, I, I think if I remember correctly, it's like eight gigs, and eight gigs was really fast, like 10, 15 years ago, but now it's kind of really slow. And, and so I'm, I'm a bit worried about the students getting these devices, and within weeks or months, they're just gonna slow down, and they're not, they're not gonna be able to use them to their full potential. And the other thing is, is that we also just approved contracts for Microsoft today. And one of the big things that is being pushed on the Chromebook is, which you could also use on a Mac, is the Google Educational Workspace. And so if we're gonna be using stuff like Google Docs and Slides and stuff, why are we gonna be doing both Microsoft Office and Google in that sense? Because that could be a cost savings, if that's where you wanted to move to.
So let me answer that. So Microsoft is already cloud-based, a lot of the applications of Office 665 are cloud-based. I think it's an excellent opportunity for our students to also be versed in, in the, in the Chrome, Google environment, which Docs, Sheets, Slides, I think it's, it's an asset for them. They become global citizens, because that's, like I said, we mentioned, that's second-leading operating systems internationally. So it's an advantage for our students to be versed on both areas as well. Again, like I said, at Microsoft, it's very cloud-based, everything's being powered through the cloud. As far as the RAM, I wanna introduce Mr. Victor, and that is, is a project coordinator. Again, he's more technically and worked really with this project in, in the technical sense.
Board, so some of the questions that you're asking as far as the RAM and the equivalent, or as you would state, not equivalent for the Chromebook. Once, now that we're seeing in future technologies and currently, everything is moved cloud-based. At that point, there's not a local installation on the actual MacBook. So it's basically acting as a window to a website, at that point where they access the application.
No, I mean, I understand that. I, I think when I see that a Chromebook has eight gigabytes and then 64 gigabytes, 64 gigabytes is what's local, right? And eight gigabytes is the amount of, let's say, applications, you could have 30 applications open with 16 gigs, and maybe only 15 with eight gigs. So it makes the device run a lot slower, that's where I'm coming from. I, I realize that, I mean, I have two terabytes of cloud storage, so I'm fully versed in that sense. And I'm more worried about how many applications, because they also take memory. So let's say you open a Photoshop application, that's gonna take up a lot of RAM. I know that not all students are gonna be on Photoshop, but the equivalent could be having PowerPoint open, Word open, Excel open, and then the device is gonna be a lot slower, and it's gonna be freezing, and it's not gonna be optimal. So that's what I'm asking.
Right, so that would be if it's a local installation, right? So as Mr. Verdusco stated, they're all web-based now. So at that point, you're basically accessing a website, not actually utilizing the resources within the laptop itself, other than to view the web. Where a lot of that resource happens on the web on the other side, right? So now you're not utilizing the actual resources of the laptop per se. And again, you've seen it marketed Walmart, you know, low, low-budget laptops. Why? Because a lot of it is web-serving. Now, in the moment that we're not doing local installations on the actual laptop itself, now you can go ahead and web-surf, but you're actually using the application, a web version of it, which is a lighter version. So at no point now are we using the resources locally installed on the MacBook, now the Chromebook basically serves as a window. So we're utilizing a MacBook right now, we have all that horsepower for a multitude of applications that we're using online. So at that point, it's not putting that heavy resource, like in times in the past, where we would have to locally install these applications. Now they're testing, Microsoft Office, you name it, they're all accessed through the web. Even Outlook, our staff, a lot of it uses the online version, right, versus locally installed.
And so you're not installing any apps whatsoever? It's all gonna be just like doing Google Doc on there?
Well, web-based, yeah.
Right, that's what I'm...
Yes, sir.
There any other questions from the trustees? Mr. Call?
I'm, you guys have probably heard me say this before, but I'm very concerned about the parental controls on, on our devices. I've half-jokingly said, giving a, you know, an elementary school child a, a device with the internet is playing with fire. Is there any difference between the iOS system and the parental controls versus the Chromebook?
I think the Chromebook, as far as what we looked at, is actually more robust, and has more features for control over the laptops, and easier to manage overall. I know one of the things that we had challenges with the MacBooks was exactly that. You know, was the challenge of being able to have content filtering for our students, versus with the Google Chrome device itself, even the Google Console, to be able to manage a lot of the filtration. Of course, same thing, still using third parties to make sure that we can filter that content, and give that kind of control back. You know, as far as the, what we use in education, just to make sure that we're, we're filtering a lot of those sites we don't want students to visit.
So we're, we're using the same third-party company to, to do the content filtering?
Either the same, or we can move even off, off of that. It just depends right now, like I tell you, we're, we're looking at more solutions that offer more features, right, for the future. To be able to take mental health for the student and all those components and add them, and have something that's better equipped for the district.
One thing that I was, that I was concerned about is that, when we first got the Apple devices, that the children could delete their, their browsing history on their, on their devices. And, and I worked with the IT department to, to close down that loophole, so they couldn't, they couldn't do that anymore. So any parent that wanted to, of course, some parents don't, but many do, could check the, the browsing history. Are we gonna have that same functionality on this, on these Chromebooks?
Yeah, we'll have that as well.
Great. The only thing I wanted to mention is, I know that this board has had a lot of conversations about the impact to families when the devices are ruined, and the one, I really do appreciate that breakdown of what that cost would be for families. I have a five-year-old, she's about to get her iPad, I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I have to tell you, that's not something I look forward to, considering I see how she treats everything else. So that's something that I personally appreciate, because I get calls from parents all the time with, they're doing homework at the table, soda spills everywhere, that's four devices for them, and that's some, that puts them in a hole that it's hard to climb out of. And I know the district has made efforts to do device refreshes. I know it's been a lot easier with Esser. Unfortunately, Esser's gone after this year, so we, we really have to start looking at that. So I do appreciate that piece as well, so thank you. And trustee Hanani?
Just a, a really quick question, and I, I do wanna highlight that as being a very important piece to this, because I've never owned a PC in my entire life. I've only owned Mac, my first iMac was 16 years old, it was the green bubble. Never owned anything but Apple since, but I do appreciate that the cost of fixing an Apple product is not going to be passed on to parents anymore. I think that's a very important piece of this conversation. The question that I have is, can you just walk us through one more time what that's gonna look like for little ones, as in pre-K, kindergarten, first grade? You know, is the iPad still gonna be part of that process, and at what age will they get the Chromebook?
So right now, we're still looking at first, second, third grade. Basically, we're taking just the same kind of model that we had before, where we had introduced the MacBook at third grade, but it's gonna be exchanged for the Chromebook.
So that, so just to clarify, based on Ms. Hanani's question, so are children who are kinder through second grade will still use iPads?
That's correct.
Okay, and then at third grade, rather than the distribution of the MacBooks, they will get the Chromebooks?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, can you, one more time, list other entities that will be using Mac?
So the, the laptops will be used, device...
Laptops, I'm sorry.
Will be for early college high schools, the PTEC academies, CCTE, and special, and other specialized programs that we might have.
Does that include IB? I'm sorry, was IB considered specialized?
No, I think it's early college high schools, CTE.
And PTEC.
And PTEC.
And then other, others, other specialized?
For example, Young Whiteman Academy.
They have laptops.
Correct.
And just one more question, will students that have had MacBooks be grandfathered in with those devices, or will they have to learn a new operating system when those age out?
Yeah, they, they currently have MacBooks assigned to them, and that will continue if there are device breaks or something, that we will still provide them a MacBook if available, if not a Chromebook.
They graduate? That's gonna be until they graduate from high school, that they'll be replaced with the device that they've been using? And I'm just asking, because I wanna make sure that we're prepared for the transition of those devices, it is a completely different operating system.
Yeah, so transitions, CO will be a hybrid environment, until we, if we face out, like I said, the, the MacBooks, and that's probably five years, six years from now. Because again, we, we remember, we just had a refresh the beginning of this January, so that, that's a life expectancy.
So clarification, so until there's a new refresh initiated, if you currently have been distributed a MacBook, you would, you, you would continue with the MacBook, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That would include your, your loner devices as well? So I mean, as we're implementing this, kid forgets their computer at home, they're handed a loner device, and that's what they use, or their computer goes out of commission because they spilled something on it. They will continue to get MacBooks through and through until that refresh period, I just wanna get clarification on that.
Until the end of life of that device.
So MacBook users will be MacBook users, Chrome users will be Chrome users, is this black and white as it gets?
Yes, sir.
Okay, trustee Call?
One of the things that sold me on the whole conversion to Apple back in, I can't remember when that was, 2019, I think?
It was like 2021.
It's all a blur, okay. Was, the, the thing that, to me, justified the, the additional costs of, of the Apple products was how long they last. Do you guys have data on what, like, is the average life of our, of our devices, particularly the Macs?
As, as far as the MacBook life, longevity? I mean, they, they last a while, but that was kind of the, the commercials, if you remember back in the day. That you have the lifecycle of.
So what you're saying is that you don't expect a significantly different lifecycle for the, the Chromebooks versus the Macs? Really?
And, and that was one of the great...
That's surprising.
The great things about the, the warranty, right? The four years unlimited claims, which, you know, parents spoke up and we listened, and we wanted to provide a solution that was able to keep that, and sustainability for the district as well.
Dr. Osavero?
And have we figured out the inventory for this, or we're still kinda working through that as this transition may happen? Because I, I know we had a bunch of devices that were just unused for years in storage, so I'm wondering how that's gonna work with the Chromebooks.
The, in question were, were already image configured and distributed to the campuses.
But do, is there still gonna be an inventory issue moving forward? Like, now that new devices, let's say the Chromebooks come in, are, did we figure out... how to distribute and make sure that we don't have a bunch on us for years?
I, I think that the question is, um, in the past, it seems that we've been challenged with making sure that we keep track of our inventory. Have we improved those systems going forward as the board is considering a purch, purchase of additional devices?
Our goal is, is image distribute and, 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 and take, take them to the campuses so they can maintain them there at the campuses as surplus as, as we go forward.
So do we have additional controls in place at the campus level, uh, associated with inventory?
Yes, and that's one, something we're working right now, uh, to improve as well.
Do you have any other questions? Nope, so I will ask for a motion on this item.
I move that the board approve the expenditures to purchase Lenbo, Lenovo 500E Chromebooks, software and services from Decision Tree Technologies, Inc., utilizing State of Texas Department of Information Resources, contract DIR, CPO 4839 in the amount of three million three hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and thirty.
Do I have a second? Second. So I have a motion by trustee Hernandez and a second by trustee Call. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No.
So I have five ayes, one no with Dr. Acevedo, and Ms. Hanani stepped away for the vote. Or was not here, present for the vote, I should say. So that now will bring us to item six K thirteen, which, just in time, trustee Hanani, I know that was the item you pulled off. Would you like staff to go through the presentation, or do you want to ask your questions?
So I, I have a few questions, actually. Um, as I went through the backup on this, I had some concerns. Um, I, I think the primary concern was that this was a very critical, um, award, especially given that it was part of a settlement agreement, and it seemed to be primarily based on price, and that was very, very concerning for me. And so as I sort of dug into the organization that was selected, again, it seemed to be based on price, and, and we, when you look at the settlement agreement, um, the settlement agreement is up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This went, this one came in significantly lower. Of course, I think their new number, um, is a hundred and thirty-five thousand forty dollars. Um, so I just, I, I wanna make sure that we are first and foremost making a good faith effort to ensure that we've selected the organization that's, um, best equipped, uh, for doing the equity audit in light of this being part of a settlement agreement. And as I sort of looked at Four Point Education, I went through their, um, client list, and out of all thirty-eight district states and local governments that had to do with education, um, I couldn't find one that really focused on equity. Um, I found workforce development, principal pipeline, curriculum development, professional development, strategic planning, performance management systems, system support, superintendent evaluation, master planning, and sustainability, but there was really nothing about equity. And there were other, um, organizations on the list that had expertise in equity. So that's really my primary concern. The other one is, when you look at the actual language from the settlement agreement, and I'm going to pull it up, um, it did, it does say, and then it specifically denotes that regardless of the process used to procure the comprehensive equity audit with the third party, defendant will provide an opportunity for public comment on that engagement at a board meeting prior to the engagement of the third party. Can you tell me if you're including this as that engagement piece as part of the settlement?
I can tell you as part of the settlement, what was contemplated with that language was exactly what happened today. It's put on a, and it's an item on the agenda, there's an ability for somebody to sign up on the agenda, there was public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, was the, was, were the, um, the plaintiffs ever notified that there, that this was going to be an agenda item on today's agenda?
I did not, um, but I can tell you that's not what the settlement agreement called for.
Right.
We are in complete compliance with the settlement agreement.
Well, yeah, and that, and again, there's a difference between being in compliance and making a good faith effort to make sure that the terms of the agreement are made, made with fidelity, and, and I'm using good faith effort really as the, the key here. Were the attorneys ever notified either, that this was gonna be on the agenda today?
No, no, I, I personally did not notify either the attorneys for the Familias Unidas de Chami Sal, or any of the individuals that signed the settlement agreement. However, I will say that the settlement agreement does not call for that.
Right.
And it's, and it's, was contemplated, and this is even true, what was talked about with their attorney, that it would be an item on a, a public item, just like it's posted on our agenda, the ability to sign up to the agenda. And actually, I believe some of the people, um, from that group were here today and did actually speak to that in public forum.
Right, I remember, I remember one speaker, and my concern is this was, just, can you tell me exactly when this was posted to the public, the agenda?
It's posted, uh, uh, according to the open meetings app?
More than seventy-two hours in advance, I'd have to ask Ms. Carrasco exactly when she posted it. But just like any other meeting.
Yeah, and, and that does concern me, because the language, yes, where you could say legally, we provided an opportunity, um, for the defendant to provide public comment without really notification. I, I, I have to ask if we made a good faith effort, um, because this was such a, a critical settlement for our district. Um, and then, again, I, that was my secondary concern. My primary concern, again, was that this settlement was based primarily on price. If you look at the rubric, um, we certainly had quite a bit left that we could have spent, and as we look through that, um, you know, there just wasn't for me, um, evidence of experience with equity audits. And, and that's why I, I would, I would really ask, and I'll, I'm happy to hear others' comments, but I would really ask that the, the rest of the board consider that and consider that the trustees, you know, consider the, the, um, the words of the trustees who have schools in this area. The, the last and final, the point I wanna make about the process, the procurement process itself, is when we looked at the committee, not one person on the committee was from a school, um, in, in one of the areas that was impacted by the settlement agreement. So the settlement agreement, of course, affected primarily schools from the Jefferson feeder pattern and from the Bowie feeder pattern, but no one on the committee was from any of the schools that were in those feeder patterns. So for me, that's three primary considerations why I, I think, uh, I'm, I'm not in favor of Four Point Partners. I won't be in favor of Four Point Partners today. I think there are more qualified, um, people on this list, and I'm, I'm hoping that the rest of the board, um, can really listen, listen to those of us trustees that have schools in these areas.
I have a question.
President, Ms. Acevedra, members of the board, just a couple of responses to some of the things that you mentioned. As far as Four Points, um, I was part of that committee. We did have an elementary principal from Jeff feeder pattern that was, that was present. We did have an elementary, middle school, and high school principal. We had, uh, fourteen members within our district to make sure that we got, um, all areas represented, and I won't read that to you, but we did have a collaborative, um, com, um, meeting or committee. One thing I know that you looked at, Four Points, if you could also look at, it's called Cross and Joftis, that was the prior, um, I guess it's the prior business that became Four Points. And they, they actually have nineteen years of experience, uh, they began in two thousand and four, and those are all things that were presented. So that company then became Four Points because one of the members actually retired, so therefore that's where Joftis came over and it became Four Points. So whenever we looked at the information, we had them actually present to the committee. The other thing that you mentioned was, um, their experience. They do have experience in thirty-four states, many of them with equity audits. Uh, they have also worked with, um, different, um, not just ISDs, but regional centers for equity currently, and I'll read you one. They're, they're working with, um, the, with T-Class Texas COVID Learning Accelerated Supports in partnership with TEA, again, a little bit with the equity. Those are the, the concerns that you had, and I could share that with you. The other piece that you mentioned, and let me go to that really quick, was the actual rubric that was used. And in the rubric, um, purchase price is one of the items. We also had reputation, the quality of vendor goods and services, meeting district needs, and then vendor reputation with the district. Out of those, um, they were actually, there was one, two, three, four, five, they were actually the top score out of, three out of the five, and they were the second top scorer out of the other two. So, um, taking out the purchase price, they were still, um, one of the top contenders in all of the other areas.
Yeah, and I, I just, for point of clarification, it was by a very marginal amount, because I did see the rubric. It was a very, there was a stark difference and, and really it looked like it came down to price, because it was a very marginal difference when you looked at all of the other factors. And I am familiar with them being Cross and Joftis. I'm familiar with the work that they did, and still, even as Cross and Joftis, they don't have a lot of experience doing equity work, um, where like MAAIC, for example, Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium, are, that's all they do. And so that was very concerning to me, because Cross and Joftis, um, now Four Point Partners, primarily seems to focus on strategic planning and performance management systems, and while I appreciate that we could certainly use that in our district, I, I really feel that this, if we're going to honor, um, the terms of the settlement agreement and honor the families that really went through these discriminatory practices in these communities, I think that, um, you know, we owe it to them to really consider the, the breadth of experience with actual equity audits with, um, you know, as mentioned earlier, in that public comment with, you know, um, English language learners and immigrant communities, and this company just didn't appear to have that experience at all. And that I am very concerned, and I, I don't, um, and that's why I don't believe that it's gonna be a good fit for what the settlement is asking us to do in honor of those families.
Trustee Hernandez?
Did you say? If I, I recall when this RFP was presented, and it was during Ms. Saia Veda's formative, I read through the whole RFP, and if I can, correct me if I'm wrong, but the whole issue was, this was the first time we were doing it, we weren't sure if even a vendor could address all the issues that we wanted, which were, um, a long list of items. And I recall going through that RFP, and I myself was surprised to see that you finally did find one. I didn't know anything about what was, what's being presented today by trustee Hanani, but, I mean, if, if a vendor, if they've met all the criteria and it's within our budget, why wouldn't we wanna start with something like this, other than, um, just wanting to know if it's gonna work for us? And knowing now that you've presented what you've presented, um, that's beyond what I think this RFP is asking.
Dr. Acevedo?
So, thank you for providing more information. I, I've looked through all the backup on this particular item, and I've done some Googling, which I usually like to do. So I'll tell you what I found on Google, but on this particular one, I think if you look at the, the rubric on all four of the pe, all the four of the companies or businesses that bid on this, they were all about equal when it came down to, um, reputation and quality and stuff like that. I would argue that Four Points Reputation is probably a little exaggerated by what I found on Google, which I'll tell you in just a sec. But, um, purchase price, um, Four Point got thirty-five points compared to the rest. So let's say it got twenty points less, it kinda evens the playing field at that point, because it, it would still be on top, it would be seventy-two, um, but then it would be very in line with the first one, American Institutes for Research, which was sixty-nine and some change, and Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium, which was also sixty-nine and some change. So I think when, um, trustee Hanani is saying that it comes down to cost, that's what really stands out for me, because the thirty-five points are there, and it comes down to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, as it was corrected earlier, and the budget for this was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the settlement, which is under two B, um, on the settlement itself. But I'm wondering, how much was Mid-Atlantic and how much was American Institutes, um, in terms of price? Just so I have an understanding of where we went with this? Cause, and, and while you look for that one, I'll, I'll mention something else that I s, I kinda raised something for me, um, in the memorandum for this recommendation for the award. I'm, I'm a little concerned that there's such a big emphasis on quantitative data analysis, and, um, I think when you're gonna do an equity audit, what probably needs to stand out a lot is really doing a lot of qualitative data analysis. They are using some qualitative methods, such as doing, um, site visits and interviews, but I'm not sure what that's necessarily going to do for the audit itself, if they're not hearing and analyzing everything that they're hearing from a lot of the families and students that, um, are affected by just so many disparities. Um, I know that my area has a lot of equity issues. I mean, I'm, I'm a, I, I just look at where I went to school and where my background is, and there were a lot of equity issues, right? Just there alone, and, um, I ended up getting adopted and somehow that happened, right? And it shouldn't have happened, and that's where I think the emphasis on this is so important to me on a personal level, just because, it's like, okay, so this one was a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, let's just go with the cheapest option, they don't really have a track record. But, um, if you have those numbers, you could tell me now, but then I'm also gonna tell you what I found on Google about, um, Scott Joftis, if that's how you pronounce it.
The one thing that I could share is with the committee, we did not go over the price. What we did is we did the reputation, we did the other items. The, the purchase price is something that we did not review, that's something that is automatically done by procurement. And the one thing that was shared with the committee is that with the difference in prices, they did share that there was a difference in prices with the points, but that still, um, the end of it, the four points would have still, like you said, without the twenty points, they were still the one that came on top. And that's where the committee felt that the price was not the one that was making decision, it was actually the community's, commu, the, the committee's feedback. And I'll defer, um, to the actual price, because that's something that we didn't look at. We started working with this company once they were at the top, and that's when we, we finalized the price.
So we're trying to, um, log into the Ionwave to actually get the cost, the, the pricing on, on the vendors.
Okay, okay, uh, uh, whenever you have that, if you could tell us, that's great, thank you, I appreciate it. The, the thing that I did find on Google is, um, about a year ago, the president of this company, Four Points, Joftis, he was on a school board in Maryland, and, um, he, I, I guess, um, he approved a payment for a company that his wife runs, and he didn't recuse himself or anything, and that, that to me kind of is a really big red flag, um, just because, though they tried to hide it on the consent agenda, they didn't even call it what the company was, um, basically because the, the board member had a big conflict of interest, because his wife was gonna benefit from this payment. And so when I see that in terms of reputation, I, I, I have a lot of pause on that. And it's really hard for, a lot of the things that I stated, but also like the reputation of this company, I, I, I think as soon as I read that, we've seen a lot of that happen here at EPI SD in another era, and to accept that from a, from a company that has that history, it's really difficult for me to get behind it. And then the other thing is, is that, you know, with Familias Unidas por la Educación, with this lawsuit that really took, I probably like two years, I wasn't a part of it, so I have no idea what happened in executive session, I had to recuse myself, um, because I was actually doing a study on them, and, um, I, I think the, the thing that I really look at is just in the past, um, ten to fifteen years, and, and there's still more, but just in this last decade in that area specifically, we had, um, the scene of the cheating scandal that happened at Bowie, that really removed, um, the board and was replaced by board and managers, and we saw a lot of people go to jail for years to come after that. Then after that, the board at the time decided that Abustipo would be great to put next to Bowie High School. That happened, and then a few years later, they closed the schools. And so, um, I, I think when I look at this settlement that the, the Familias Unidas, um, did with EPI SD, it was a lot of good faith, and I think- D, it was a lot of good faith, and I think the, the one thing that we owe it, owe to them at this point is to really do a really good study with somebody that is going to be capable of moving this work forward, and I think it's just a disservice, just with the amount of history that's happened in the past ten, fifteen years, to give them a really horrible product at the end, and that's what we're going to get, and another horrible product by some shady people doing it, that are not completely qualified to do it, that are going to be looking at a lot of quantitative data, that is not going to give us the full scope.
Found the, the pricing. So for American Institutes of Research, the cost was two-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars with forty-four cents. Education Northwest was two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, and Mid-Atlantic Equity was two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy.
Thank you, Martha, I really appreciate that, and, and I think with looking at the, the history that Mid-Atlantic has, I, I really do think that it's worth another eighty-thousand dollars to go in that direction, instead of accepting what's being put be, before us, because I, I thought it was going to be an extreme thing, in terms of where the disparity was in terms of price, but two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, with the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget, I still think that's a big win that we can have.
So if I may interrupt for a moment, just to be clear about the process and what the board can do, because the procurement was put out by the procurement department. There was a committee, they evaluated, and they're bringing the evaluation to the board for, as their recommendation for the board's decision of whether or not they're going to accept the recommendation. The board is not in the position to independently evaluate the, the vendors that responded to the RFP. That is not, that's not your role as, as the board, unless the board were to do the entire evaluation process, which you haven't done. And it is delegated to the procurement department to issue RFPs on behalf of the district. I just want to make sure that we're clear as to, because I'm hearing the conversation, and I just want to make sure that individual trustees don't have an understanding that they can replace their judgment for the evaluation committee without having been the committee itself.
But, but we could vote, vote it down, right?
Yes, you could vote it down, of course.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Collins, I think Mr. Call has got some questions.
I was just actually going to talk about that. I, I, maybe my memory is a bit fuzzy, but I, I can never remember a time in the last four-plus years that, that the board has, has gotten involved in the procurement process. I, I, I appreciate the passion on this, but I just, I'm hesitant to, to get involved in the procurement process, because we don't have all the data. But that, that is a concerning thing about the, the owner's wife, but I, I don't have any, you know, evidence or proof in front of me right now, and all I can go off is, is the scores. And personally, I, when it comes down to the qualitative versus quantitative argument, Dr. Dr. Sayveda and I have talked about this from time to time, but I actually prefer the quantitative approach here, because I think it's, it's cleaner and more fair. And I, I am going, I just don't see a reason to spend an extra eighty or a hundred thousand dollars for something that's going to be a similar product, so. I am going to make a motion. Did you want to say something?
No.
President Irbali, okay. I move that the board approve the award of the equity audit in the action plan, RFP twenty-dash-ninety-five to Four Point Education Partners LLC, and approve the contract in the amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand? We changed that, didn't we? Oh, no, it's correct on here, okay. And forty dollars for one year, as presented with the option to extend the RFP for an additional four years, twelve months at a time.
Do you have a second?
I second.
That's a motion by trustee Call, a second by trustee Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in opposition?
No.
No.
That's going to be four votes yes, three votes no, the item passes. And that takes us to six K fourteen, which trustee Call, I believe you were the one who asked for that to be taken.
Yeah. While you guys are coming up, I'm just going to say, as the quasi-insurance expert on the board, I, I just wanted to take a, a second look at this, and I appreciate staff, you know, responding to my email from earlier. I do have a couple of additional questions, though, that doesn't, that wasn't really clear to me from, from the response that I got. Give me one second to pull it up, though. Oh, okay, so, breaking down the sixty million, so we're spending sixty million on the pharmacy, the health plan services, the stop loss, the HSA, Cobra, et cetera. I see that the, the claims is fifty-four million, eight-hundred thousand, that makes, that makes perfect sense. Can you explain what, what all goes into the admin cost of five-point-one million?
Good evening, Board President Irbali, Ms. Sayyvedra, and board members. As you can, with your question, as far as admin fees, those are the admin fees that are being utilized to pay for our representatives that are managing this, this account.
For Cigna?
Yes.
Okay, so the five-point-one goes to Cigna for the administration of the, of the plan.
And they're managed, yes, they're managing.
Okay, so then what, what would be the payroll expense for two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand?
Good evening, President Irbali, good evening, board members, good evening, Superintendent Sayyvedra. So, the amount that is there is based on the payroll amount for our associates that are currently assisting us here at the school district. We have two, one Cigna representative that is based on customer service, and another one is our health coach, that is assisting us. She is also a registered nurse.
So one health coach and one administrator?
Yes.
And they're Cigna's employees, but we, but we pay their salaries?
That is also part of the, the healthcare fund, which is the amount that is listed here.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand what you were just saying, what?
So it's part of the total cost that's included in the RFP amount, and it's broken down by the different services, so the payroll cost is a separate line item?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So basically, the difference between the five-point-one million and the two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand is that the five-point-one million is for the Cigna folks that don't work here, and the two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand is for the Cigna folks that work here.
That is correct.
Right? Okay. Okay, that's it, thank you.
There's any other questions from the trustees? No, do I have a motion?
This is for just fourteen, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move that the board approve the award of the health plan services, pharmacy, stop loss, health savings account, and Cobra, RFP twenty-three dash zero-seven-eight to Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company, in an annual amount of sixty-million-two-hundred-and-nineteen-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine, for an initial term of three years, with the option to extend the agreement for two additional one-year periods, subject to the review and approval of contract documents by district's legal counsel, with the provision that the contract may contain identification clause limited to the extent, to the extent permitted by the law.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That's a motion by trustee Hernandez, a second by trustee Quayar, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? The item passes seven oh, and that will take us to our public meeting, which is item seven. So this item calls for a public meeting, so after the presentation by staff, we'll open the floor to any speakers that may want to address the board regarding this matter, so I open it up to you, Ms. Sayyvedra, and your team.
Yes, sir, thank you, President Irbali, trustees, our CFO, Martha Aguirre, along with Walt Byers, will be presenting information about our proposed tax rate this evening, so I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Aguirre, so she can share how they've come to the proposed tra, tax rate, which I understand is lower than the previous year's tax rate.
Correct. Good evening, President Irbali, board members, Ms. Sayyvedra, my name is Martha Aguirre, and I'm the chief financial officer, and this evening, we're here to present part two of our budget adoption and tax rate adoption. And so pursuant to Texas Code Education Section forty-five-point-zero-zero-two and Board Policy CCG, the board must adopt a tax rate for the district on an annual basis, no later than September thirtieth. And this evening, we have Mr. Walt Byers, our treasurer, here to provide you a presentation on the information related to our tax rates. I do want to just reference, I know we have two new board trustees, that will be doing this for the first time. As you may be aware, the, the district has two tax rates, the maintenance and operations tax rate and the INS. Maintenance and operations is related to just that, the operations of the district, from personnel costs to just operational expenses. And so the tax rate that is set will, will fund that aspect of the district's operations. And the INS, it's the Interest and Sinking Fund, and that basically provides the revenue needed for any of the district financial debt that they have incurred for our facilities. And so with that said, I'm going to move it over on to Mr. Byers.
Hello, good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Irbali, President Irbali, trustees and president, and Superintendent Sayyvedra. Start off here with the recent legislative, legislature that just passed in the second special session, SB two, it increased the homestead exemption from forty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. This is still subject to voter approval, but it's effective immediately, if it passes in November, it's effective for the current tax year and the current school year, and it'll be on your January payments, your January bills that are due. And it reduces the M and O tax rate by an additional ten-point-seven-six, that's the compression rate that the state calculates, that's also effective right away. And then this SB two also includes state M and O and INS funding, hold harmless funding. To set the M and O tax rate, we begin by the, setting the compression rate, which is based on information we sent to T E A on our taxable values. So we had seven-point-four-two percent growth in taxable values, and they calculated a compressed rate of point seven-nine-five-oh, they deducted the ten-point-seven, and so our compressed rate is sixty-eight-eighty. That's our tier-one MCR rate. We also had some enrichment pennies that were approved many years ago, thirteen cents worth, and so we have eight golden pennies and five-point-eight copper pennies, and so that's our, our M and O tax rate that we're asking you to approve, point eight-two-six-three. The INS rate, we need to set a rate that'll generate enough revenue for our budgeted debt payments of fifty-seven-point-one million dollars. And because of the homestead exemption decreasing how much we think we're going to collect, we have to increase that INS rate a little bit. So the two rates, the proposed tax rate is eighty-two-sixty-three for M and O, point three-one-o-eight for INS. The M and O rate is an, is a decrease of almost eighteen cents, point one-seven-nine-eight, and the INS is an increase of about a third of a penny, point zero-zero-three-two. So the total tax rate of one-thirteen-seventy-one is a decrease from last year's tax rate of point one-seven-six-six cents. This just shows a ten-year history of our, of our tax rates. I just want to real quick show the, the INS rate back in twenty-sixteen, when we had our bond election, was sixteen and a half cents, and it's gone up to, gone up to thirty-one-o-eight over those years. But during that time, we issued six-hundred-and-sixty-eight million dollars of debt, and we're paying down that debt. When we issued that rate, when we, when the thing was elected, when it was approved in, in November of twenty-sixteen, we communicated to the voters that we were going to increase our tax rate at the most eighteen-point-eight cents, and this is about a fourteen-point-five-cent increase. And then our IN, our M and O rate, if you look at twenty-nineteen, that's when we were at our max, we were at the dollar-four-plus voter-approved thirteen cents, a dollar-seventeen. HB three was, was passed in twenty-nineteen, and so it was, ever since then, the state has been compressing the tax rate, and that shows the compression each year down to our current eighty-two-sixty-three. The seven-point-four-two percent increase, that's what the state calculated off of net taxable values, but in order to calculate how much revenue we're going to receive, we need to change that net taxable into a certified levy. So on forty-thousand-dollar homestead exemption, we also have to deduct the freeze taxable, freeze taxable from the net taxable. So with that deduction, our increase goes from seven-point-four-two to only four-point-eight-two, but that's at forty-thousand dollars, homestead exemption, which is the current law. If you change that to a hundred K, that four-point-eight-two increase turns into a six-point-two-two decrease in how much we're going to collect. And then if you apply the new tax rate, that six-point-two-two drops to eleven-point-six-three decrease. So we're going to collect about forty-two million dollars less in local taxes than we did last year. But the whole, the hold harmless from the state is supposed to be about the same amount. So in one of our future meetings, we'll come forward with a budget amendment to decrease local revenue and increase state revenue. I won't go through all this, but just shows a history of our, our property values, just the last two years, last year we saw a big increase of about nine-point-five percent, and this year we showed a, the eleven-point-six percent decrease. Okay? This shows the other taxing entities, they've already posted their proposed rates, all of these are proposed rates. So you can see the city is proposing about a four-cent decrease, the county is proposing about a three-cent increase, and Community College is going down a little bit, you know, very small amount, and U M C going up a very smaller amount. Most likely, we're the only ones that are going to, but it depends on your property values, if they increase or decrease, but with property value increases, the other ones are probably going to have a slight increase in what you actually pay. This is just for the school district, it's not the other ones, and it's, it shows the average value from last year and the current average value, then it applies the hundred-thousand homestead exemption. And so based on that, the average values, how the average value home in the district should pay seven-hundred-and-eighty-three-ninety-five less in property taxes, in school property taxes. Six-hundred-and-eighty-two of that is from the, the homestead exemption, and a hundred one dollars is from the lower tax rate. This shows an example of a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar home and a three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar home. Now, the only thing, you know, I did this kind of the way the state does it, they say you're going to get this huge decrease, and just based on value staying the same, you are going to get a really good decrease. So in a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar home, you're going to get a thousand-dollar, one-thousand-and-thirty-five-dollar decrease, that same six-eighty-two is the homestead exemption, and three-fifty-three from taxes. However, if those, if your values increase, which they most likely will, and if you apply the ten percent cap onto this, that would take away two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars of that increase. So for, if that two-hundred-and-forty-thousand goes up ten, ten percent, that one-thousand-and-thirty-five savings turns into- So if that 240,000 goes up 10%, that $1,035 savings turns into only $762 savings. Because I didn't want to just make everybody think they're going to get these huge savings. And the same thing with the 340. It shows a $1,212 decrease, 682 from the homestead, and $530 from taxes. But that, 10% applied to that is $387. So it turns that decrease from 1212 to 825. These are a couple of the things we're required to calculate. You have a worksheet in your backup material that shows these two rates. We're below both of those, no new revenue tax rate. We're at $11371 versus $11604, and we're below the voter-approved rate of $11681. If we go above that, we have to go to the voters to go above that. And then this is the motion for the tax rate adoption. This is our recommended motion.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to any speakers that may want to speak, as this is a public meeting. You do not have to sign up to speak. If you'd like to speak, it is open for you. Yes, ma'am. If you could just come up and state your name, and then you have the three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jenny Solo. Great presentation. Did understand a lot of it, but like the visuals. What I understand is that right now, the tax reduction is made up by the state surplus, right? But what I fear going forward is that that surplus is going to be gone. And so the adoption of this tax rate makes sense to me because of the fact that we're anticipating that they're giving us a bunch of money, but down the road, that could be gone. And we need to pay our people, right? The other thing that I wanted to point out was that I'm a little concerned because what I've read so far is a lot of news stories coming out that we're, the mandated, you know, cop on campus, so to speak, is not fully funded. It was supposed to be like $90. I think Senator Joe Moody said that. We got like 10 cents. So I'm afraid we're going to have to dip into our general fund. So that's going to be another issue. So I just wanted to kind of point those out, so really wanted to. I mean, I don't want to pay more taxes, but still, it's needed.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers that'd like to speak on this public meeting? Seeing as there is none, I will close out the public meeting and move over to Actum 8A, which is discuss and take appropriate action on the resolution adopting a tax rate for the El Paso Independent School District for Tax Year 23.
I could ask a question?
Yeah, yeah. This is where the trustees can go in.
Okay, cool. Okay, so I ask this question every year, just so I'm thinking out loud and I'm able to digest it, because it's just a lot of information, right, to understand. But our MNO, our maintenance and operations rate, is going down about 18 cents, 17 and 1/2 cents or so, because we have to compress it every year because of state law that started in 2019.
That's correct.
Okay. And then our INS rate, that's the only one that kind of can go up. I guess the other one can too. It triggers an election, and voters have to approve it, which we haven't got into in the four years that that has happened. But the INS rate is going up by about a penny or so, and that is to pay for our bonds.
That's correct. And it's going up by a third of a penny, .0032.
And so the INS is our interest in sinking, which basically is our debt. And with that, it's voter-approved debt, because it's paying for the bonds that we've had in the past.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to put up.
I think we all appreciate when you think aloud on this one, so we can all understand it, so thank you on that. Are there any other questions from any other trustees on this item? No, so with that, I'll entertain a motion. If no one wants, I will happily make this motion. I move that the board adopt the resolution adopting a tax rate for the El Paso Independent School District for the tax year of 2023 at a tax rate of $1.1371, which consists of $0.8263 for maintenance and operation, MNO, and $0.3108 for interest in sinking, INS. Do I have a second?
Second.
That is a motion by myself, trustee Irobali, a second by trustee Hanani. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? The item passes unanimously with 7-0, and this takes us to item 8B, Proposed Revisions to Board Policy, EHB Local, Basic Instructional Program Required Instructions in Elementary. I'd like to kick it off to the superintendent. I know that we do have some, there is some information up here on the feedback. Or would you like to take public comment first?
It's up to you, Mr. Irobali.
We'll take public comment first.
We're going to have eight speakers. Jenny L. Solo.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jenny Solo. I'm a parent, and I really appreciate everyone on the board, because this is a volunteer position. You're not even paid for this. So really opened my eyes, it's my first meeting, and wanted to thank you guys for being here and really caring about our kids. Because I don't doubt that anybody here is not thinking about the kids. Everybody here is. So, you know, we're a community that cares. And, you know, I understand the ideas to switch up the language and keeping the 20 minutes of unstructured recess, 45 minutes of scheduled daily, but those are two different things. I'm not even sure where this came about, because I've been here for three years. I never knew that PE was an issue. Cutting down on PE time is impacting our students' physical health. I know that I don't exercise 30 minutes a day. It shows. So, I mean, if we're taking that away from our kids, or if we're cutting it down, we're creating long-lasting lifelong habits. I grew up in a district that didn't have that. So I didn't learn until much later in life how important health is. Education's really important in terms of learning, studying, books, everything like that. However, at the end of the day, our physical health is what matters when I'm this old, my age, right? And so COVID already threw us off balance, and our children have already dealt with so much uncertainty. My question is today is, why now? Why so quickly? It was enacted, basically, at the start of the school year. I didn't find out about it until a week beforehand. You know, teachers didn't find out about it. I don't know when. We're still struggling with it. I barely got my schedule today for my kids' schools. They're still working on that. Second, almost, we don't need change in terms of, just for change's sake. We need to think things through. I mean, I went to the meeting, I asked those questions at Tom Leah, said, hey, you know, if this is a great program, I'm all for it, but give me some statistics. What is this based upon? Someone told me it was based upon this CoraWin program, which apparently it's not. So as a member of the community, I'm in the dark. I don't know where this decision came from. I don't know why we need it, and I don't know why we're acting on it so quickly. The rollout of communication was just horrible in the first place. And now on top of that, we're putting more stress on our teachers. And personal experience, my son was excited about being to choose, able to choose exercises in PE this year. He only has one chance to do fourth grade. My daughter only has one chance to do second grade.
Time.
So, I'm sorry. So, you know, they just need to have stability.
Thank you very much.
Jacqueline Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Martinez, and I reside in District 6. So whenever a teacher meets with a parent, we always start with a positive before we go into constructive feedback. First and foremost, I applaud the person or team that was in charge of launching the district-wide Fiesta Kickoff celebrations, A+ for community outreach and engagement. According to the event's announcement, the aim was to, quote, "strengthen relationships, promote transparency, and enhance communication channels between campuses, families, and community stakeholders." Fantastic. However, in hindsight, it's difficult to not perceive it as an intentional distraction because during efforts to promote the event, the district was simultaneously attempting to quietly make changes to the elementary school's PE schedule without stakeholder input. And oddly enough, it didn't become public knowledge until a week before school started. As the kids like to say, that's sus. To add insult to injury, when you attempted to do damage control due to the backlash by holding a community meeting, there was only one school board member present. I don't have the time to go into what a disaster that meeting was, but suffice it to say that the community members that were present only left that meeting even more confused and angrier than when they arrived. I'm curious how the district plans to comply with Texas Education Code 28.002, which states that students are required to participate in daily physical activity for at least 30 minutes. Any teacher can confirm that 15 minutes of recess before or after lunch is pretty standard. The district has used PE time as a way to remain in compliance. So the question is, how will that work when you remove it? Are you going to create a policy that guarantees 30-minute recess at every single campus? Furthermore, if the motive of removing PE time is to sneak in HB 4545 accelerated instruction time, which I suspect the district disguised as win what I need, two things. Number one, the Texas Education Agency explicitly states that this is not allowed. Number two, both HB 4545 and HB 1416 make it clear that parents have the right to opt their child out of accelerated instruction. Has the district done its due diligence to inform parents of this option, or would that derail the plan to decrease PE time? I think parents have a right to know. I will close with this. Standardized testing, specifically the STAR, is not only a multimillion-dollar business that has Texas schools in a chokehold, it's a scam. It is used to weaponize data for school funding, evaluating teachers, and labeling children, which causes unnecessary stress and anxiety. The worst part of this scam is that it doesn't even accurately measure learning or student growth. Does the district really want to perpetuate all this by taking away the students' one shred of their day that isn't focused on testing and data? Thank you.
Aduelo Valdez Jr. Aduelo Valdez Jr.
Good evening, Superintendent and EPISD School Board Trustees. I'm Aduelo Valdez Jr. I serve as the founder of the El Paso Genders and Sexualities Alliance Board, as well as a leader of the Autocratic 2+ Youth on the local, state, and national levels. I rise this evening due to the recent revelation of physical education being decreased. Transparency and accountability is preached over and over again, yet once again, there is none. There was zero opportunity for community input, excuse me, nonetheless notification because the community was not notified in the first place. You are elected officials and school administrators, not gods. We, the people, have the power, and we, the people, are who tell you what to do, not the other way around.
Leah Wickham.
Ms. Wickham spoke at the beginning, because we moved her board.
And just as a reminder, she spoke as a member of the Shack, who was a part of the original policy development that we're considering this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Norma de la Rosa.
Good evening, Mr. Irobali, members of the board, Ms. Ayvedra. I am Norma de la Rosa, President of El Paso Teachers Association, a classroom teacher for 40 years, seven of those years having taught physical education in grades K through 5. I am asking that the language revision being proposed in EHAB Local not be approved. Physical education in El Paso ISD has been for years a model program that was well-known across the United States. PE classes in EPISD were always being visited by administrators and physical education teachers from across the country. There are Texas TEACs and standards that must be taught at all grade levels, and our PE teachers are expected to teach those skills in 20 minutes a day or two days a week will not meet the mastery of those standards. SHAPE America, formerly American Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, has defined excellence in school-based health and physical education. For decades, SHAPE America's national standards for K through 12 physical education has served as the foundation for well-designed physical education programs, standards that EPISD physical education has followed and continues to follow. Many of these standards are the basis of the TEACs. There are five standards. The physically literate individual demonstrates competence in a variety of motor skills and movement patterns. The physically literate individual applies knowledge of concepts, principles, strategies, and tactics related to movement and performance. The physically literate individual demonstrates the knowledge and skills to achieve and maintain a health-enhancing level of physical activity and fitness. The physically literate individual exhibits responsible, personal, and social behavior that respects self and others. The physically literate individual recognizes the value of physical activity for health, enjoyment, challenge, self-expression, and your social interaction. In addition, these standards align with Castle's social and emotional learning competencies and related skills. This allows our PE teachers to incorporate SEL competencies into their standards-based lesson plans. Reducing physical education time and adding instructional minutes to the classroom is not the answer. Research studies have shown that students are more engaged and active in class after coming from physical education. I'm appealing to you, the board, especially to you, Ms. Hernandez, to understand the value of physical education and the importance of students participating every day for 45 minutes. Understand what effect it will have on our special needs students who are ADHD or autistic. As I saw firsthand the positive effects that it had, not just on my special needs students who were thrilled to be part of a team to play, but all of my students. Don't take that away from them. And as a final note, it was brought to my attention today that the word was out that physical education teachers who would come to speak today would be noted as to who they were, what campus they were from, and what comments they would make. Thank you.
Ross Moore.
Board President Irobali, board members, Ms. Ayvedra. My name is Ross Moore, President of El Paso AFT. Given the hour, I'm going to try to do this as quickly as possible. I'm asking you to hit the pause button, rethink this, and do it right. Okay? My stake in this, my members have to teach and succeed in teaching the children of this district, be they regular ed or special ed, in classrooms in elementary schools. Reducing PE time is going to reduce learning and leave these kids, no disrespect meant to parents here, with excess energy that they're going to burn off, disrupt the class, increase behavioral issues, and hurt learning. The second thing I'm going to ask is, this kind of has a bad look to it, and that's not what EPISD needs now. It's kind of like, well, we don't like the rules, we want to change it, we got some pushback, so we're just going to plow on and move ahead. I'd ask, how much actual polling or sampling of constituents, trustees, your constituents, has been done to find out where the people you're responsible to stand on this? You know, there's a lot of talk about low priority on test scores because we want to develop the whole child. By turning back FIZED and the bad look this has, that belies that. You know, I'm hearing good folks here tonight saying, let's rethink this. Let's see if this, how do we make this work? And, you know, the thing EPISD doesn't need to do, there's been some oopses in the past, going the wrong way on this, rushing into something, what you're going to do is alienate a community whose support you need. So, all around, please, hit the pause button, and let's figure out the right way to do this. Thank you very much.
Kyle Gorman, or Gorhan. Kyle Gorhan. Last speaker, Caroline Mann.
Good evening, President Irobali.
Good evening, President Arobali, board members, and Ms. Ayvedra. My name is Caroline Manning, and I'm here today as a community member, as a parent, and as the EPISD Council of PTA's president, to speak to you on the removal of the 45 minutes of PE for Fine Arts. Just before the last school board meeting, I was notified of this issue, problem, from And I've listened to the presentations, I've been to the forums, I've spoken to parents, I've spoken to teachers, and it just seems that everybody had no idea of where this came from, how it was going to work, how they were even notified. So if we're talking about being transparent, I don't believe that we were. I know for a fact that the council was not notified, Shack was not notified, and we are one of the tools that we, that you all have as a resource to get information out to parents, to teachers. Use us, that's what we're here for. In the forum, I did ask, how is this win situation going to work into a child's schedule? And I was told it was not going to take away from any of the other subjects. So what I did was, I pulled my nephew's schedule out, and their first period for 45 minutes was called intervention. Went down the other subjects. They had math, reading, science, all that, that's great. But this win, from what I understand, is taking the place of this intervention. This intervention time, 45 minutes, is time for them to go to the library, to do homework, to do, if they don't have either, what do they do? Just sit in the class. But what we need to focus is that these children, and when I think back of these children, they need an outlet. They need to be physical, get that adrenaline going to get them through that next half of the day. They need some physical activity every single day. I understand, and I'm all for having Fine Arts to get our students to excel. I get that, I want that. But we need to do it the right way, and that's what we're here for. Use us, use us as a tool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers. So at that, at this time, I'd like to, Ms. Ayvedra, if you'd like to kind of walk through the items that you provided to the board.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you who took the time to be here at this evening's board meeting, that you all sat through the board meeting so that you could express your thoughts. I do appreciate all of the feedback that you all have given on behalf of whoever you're representing. I know that we had about eight or nine speakers total this evening to speak on this issue. Some were representing, you know, teachers, some were parents representing other parents, others were PTA. And so I do want you to know that, as the administration, we do appreciate your engagement. Engagement is critical and important to us. As I mentioned, when I opened the presentation that was given by the board on August the 1st, or given to the board, I'm sorry, on August the 1st, I think that something that we all have in common in what we want is, we do want what's best for our kids. I think everyone can agree that we're all on the same page there. You know, I know that we differ in the ways that we get there, and so that's what engagement brings in many cases. I also shared with the public that I'm not going to attempt to defend the method in which we got here, and whether, because certainly there's plenty of room for us to improve in terms of the level of transparency and the amount of time that was given for parents in the community to process the information. So, you know, I'm not going to negate the feelings and the perceptions of those who feel like we could have been more transparent, or we could have provided more information. And so what I would like to share with you this evening, or I'll hand it over to Ms., Dr. Gonzalez in just a second, to share with you, as we've gone through and had conversations with the community post-August 1st, once we presented some clarity to the board, I want her to share what we've done since then to try to answer questions and engage the community. I know that many of the things that we did were, as soon as the board meeting was finished on August the 1st, the next day, we posted a landing page for parents to review specific information. We included, we posted the presentation, we went ahead, and over the course of the week, there were several open houses that were conducted where parents were given additional information. We pushed out a survey for the parents to respond with much of the information that we shared with the board on August the 1st. We welcomed community members on that Saturday so that we could have a face-to-face meeting. And so we've done a number of things over the course of the week prior to school starting. I want to clarify that we started the school year with five days of PE, and including the five days of the additional win time for intervention, extension, or enrichment. And so, before I hand it over to Dr. Gonzalez, I did want to just clarify, I know that there were many comments about how we got here and what was the reasoning behind us, considering the possibility of entertaining a different schedule at the elementary level. And at this point, the four drivers, I believe, for us to consider, that was, number one, fidelity to instructional minutes was important. What we found over the course of the year, as we were assessing and evaluating where we were instructionally as a school district, we couldn't, there was not a level of consistency across elementaries in terms of how we were creating schedules. And in many instances, we were finding that the way the schedules were put together, there was many opportunities where students were being pulled from Tier One instruction, and it could have been for a number of different reasons. So there was not fidelity or protected time to content, Tier One instructional delivery. So as we thought about prioritizing what we needed to consider in creating schedules for the new school year, that was one factor that came into play. The second factor was, also, that was mentioned this evening by many who spoke, are to create within the school day intervention, extension, and/or enrichment opportunity for students. When I say intervention, our campuses have been staffed with math and reading specialists to specifically engage in skill-based intervention, not House Bill 4545 prep or things of that nature. I know that there's a lot of that that we discovered in our, you know, across the school district in terms of how we're intervening with students. And our, really, our goal is to intervene with students to, you know, in a skill-based, very targeted intervention approach, not necessarily as a form of test prep for, you know, preparation for the STAR exam. When I think about extension or enrichment, those are some of the other opportunities that we are working to provide for students in the form of, you know, Makerspace opportunities, you know, possibly GT, you know, receiving specific targeted gifted and talented services, additional time in the library, or additional opportunities for, you know, coding and robotics opportunities. And then the third, the third piece is really, I want all to know that I do understand the importance of physical education. All of the research that has been cited by many of you who have spoken, and even some of the emails that I've received, you know, I concur with the research. Physical activity is important for students during the school day, and as we look at, you know, maintaining fidelity of instructional minutes, creating an opportunity during the school day for academic intervention, enrichment, and extension, we also want to make sure that we hold true to physical education and Fine Arts. And the fourth is just the possibility of introducing additional choice options for our students. And so those are really the four, you know, the why or the four tenants behind the decision-making as we think about elementary schedules. I do believe that there's a solution to be had that really allows us to meet the, you know, those four tenants while we remain, you know, committed to physical activity. I do, you know, I know that Ms. De La Rosa mentioned that, you know, El Paso ISD is known around the state for their PE programming. I would say that in my first year, when I visited campuses, that is absolutely true. I was very impressed with the physical education classroom and the instructional delivery that students were receiving. It was very interactive, it was very intentional, and students were getting good, solid, physical activity. The trustees on the dais have, I sent you all in your board update this week, information as a result of the survey that we pushed out to parents after we presented to the board on August the 1st, which outlines information. Option A, which included four days of PE with an option for Fine Arts on the fifth day, and then option B, that maintained the five days of PE. In both options, students would be afforded Fine Arts with either option. As I said, we've started the school year with the second option, which maintains the five days of PE. If you look at the, at the survey data, at this point, if you look at it district-wide, there are about 55% of our community with about a little over 2,800 respondents, which is about 11, or I think it was 13% of our student population in, elementary students in El Paso ISD. So 55% who were willing to entertain four days of PE with an option for Fine Arts on the fifth day, and then 45% for the five days of PE. Now, that was also provided to the board by campus, and also cumulatively by the district that you represent, so that you could see, you know, some of the breakdown. It also included the number of respondents for each campus and for each district that you represent. One of the purposes for sending out the survey was to give principals information so that they could make a determination about what their communities feel is important for them to consider in making a determination about option A and/or option B. What's being brought forth to the board today is consideration of EHAB for two reasons. Number one, I know that there was a request for the board to be able to review the policy, so we added it to the agenda, in addition to provide clarity in terms of the language, because I do believe that there was some questions about the interpretation of the policy itself. The, while the administration has made a recommendation to strike some of the language, I want to be clear that striking of the language is not with the intent to reduce PE to two days. We shared with the board on August the 1st that we were committed to continuing conversations and dialogue with the public about PE. It's evident that this community, you know, that PE is very, very important for a number of reasons, not necessarily just the research, but just, you know, health-wise. I've received some information also on the concern in the community associated with obesity and diabetes and things of that nature. And so, as I said, the, I mean, not the board, I'm sorry, we as the administration are committed to continuing to engage with the community and continue to think about how our proposed schedules might work, and continue to gather information from the community so that we can make any recommendations or decisions about what would happen in year two and beyond. And, you know, the community may share that, you know, we've made a few tweaks to the schedule, and this is about as much as we're willing to do, because we do want to maintain this. And if that comes back from the feedback, we're going to take all of that information to the Shack. We'll work through our PTAs so that we can continue to keep the PTA councils informed, and with each one of our feeder pattern elementary communities, so that we can bring back to the board any recommendations that might be considered going forward beyond this school year, other than what we've proposed. And so I felt like it was important for us to just summarize where we are as a school district, and again, thank those of you who, you know, have been advocates and have been willing to engage, not necessarily just through email, but in a number of different ways. It's, you know, it makes me, you know, happy as a superintendent to know that there's great care and concern from our families and our community about children, just as there's a lot of care and concern from this administration about children, and really wanting to explore what's possible for our children, and really just committed to delivering on the promise of a brighter future for our children and for our families. So with that, I know that Dr. Gonzalez and members of the school leadership are here to answer any questions from the board on the recommended language and/or, you know, any other question that might come up. And Ms. Collins, I'm not sure if there's any guidance that we need at this point.
No, I think you could take, just take the questions from the board, I think, or open up the discussion from the board.
Do you want me to touch on at all FFA and sort of why we're wanting to provide clarity? Good evening, everyone. I just sort of jumped there for a minute. Thank you for letting me bring this proposal to you. I'm Dr. Carla Gonzalez, Chief of Schools. And what is before you this evening is a proposed revision. The purpose, as it states in the agenda, is to provide a little bit more additional clarity to EHAB Local. And I did mention FFA, and I'll explain why. We've had a lot of spirited debates over the last few weeks when it comes to these and in the options of PE and in being able to provide more student choice and electives. EHAB was first introduced and became a local policy in January of 2020. EHAB was first introduced and became a local policy in January of 2020. And it is, it falls under Basic Instructional Program Required Instruction Elementary. And it's, it's entitled "Daily Physical Activity Recession." And this is where a lot of the clarity we feel needs to be brought into. As it reads, "As part of a campus's daily, students in kindergarten through grade five shall participate in unstructured physical activities for 20 minutes each day throughout the school year. The 20 minutes of unstructured recess time each day shall be in addition to structured physical education and before and/or after physical activity programs. A student shall not be denied recess as a means of punishment to complete work or to attend tutorials." So the, the spirit originally for this was to really solidify the importance of recess, daily 20-minute recess. And as we've talked and presented in our options, this has never been at all in the discussion that we would do anything to hinder or to lessen the amount of time of recess time. What had been in here and is sort of the revision is that where it said, "The 20 minutes of unstructured recess time each day shall be in addition to the original wording, the 45 minutes of scheduled daily structured physical education and therefore end or after-school physical activity programs." Why the interpretation and why a lot of the debate has started, basically as we started talking about options for our students, we also have a local policy, FFA. FFA also, interestingly enough, was updated also in 2020, but in March of the same year. And it falls under the, the title of Student Welfare, Wellness, and Health Services. And it covers very extensively everything we do to provide a safe and healthy environment for our students. And it includes daily physical education. And for our edu, for our elementary, and it outlines middle, high school, everyone, but for our elementary students, it says, "Students in kindergarten's grade five, including students with disabilities, special healthcare needs, and in alternative education settings, will receive a minimum of 30 minutes of daily physical, health, physical education, or its equivalent of 150 minutes per week throughout the school year." So FFA outlines 30 minutes, at least protecting that, and at the very minimum, even if it's not daily, we're still going to provide 150 minutes. Also in FFA regulation, it does have the daily recess and again, solidifies elementary students will have at least 20 minutes of supervised recess each school day, preferably outdoors, and goes in again about how this cannot, this time cannot be taken away. So again, as we were debating back and forth and wanting to solidify and clarify, we felt it was important to bring to you because we do have two rather different directions in terms of PE. What it does tell you is that we value it very, very much. We incred, we have incredible value to recess, which is that unstructured free play for our students, but we also highly value the physical education and that it be structured physical education because we know it's not just about being active, it's also learning about the best way to take care of ourselves and to value that being active and being healthy will help us as we grow into adulthood. So again, we are bringing this revision. The revision is just simply taking out the 45 minutes of scheduled daily, doesn't change that we're still very dedicated to recess, and we still have the FFA outline, which really does drive what we do do in terms of physical education. We can always go above and beyond, which what we have done in both of our options. Every option for our elementary students this year provides 45 minutes every day if a parent opts, even in option A, which, in our survey and the feedback from those who participated, showed people are willing. They want, they are looking at four days with that, that fifth day rotating in that, that same time block as the PE, as being something they'd like to, to entertain. Our parents who were not, that wanted that five day, still were comfortable with option A as long as they had that parent option to opt out of the fine arts and maintain the five days of PE. And that, and option A still allows a parent to do that. Both of our options in the end provide that PE every day. 45 minutes is what we're scheduled, 45 minutes is what we're protecting, just like we're protecting our instructional times. But again, we are bringing back EHAB. The revision is just to provide clarity to the language and so that we can hopefully also align more in what our other regulations and our policies are outlining for us when it comes to PE. Recession, it's consistent across the board. There's just a little bit of a different interpretation in what is written in our policies and our regulations. So if there's, I'm open to questions at this time. I don't know if there's anything else.
Yeah, so I, I do want to take note that trustees Quayre and trustee Hennany also requested to put this item on, so out of respect for them requesting those items come to the board. I'd like to open up to y'all first to kind of ask your questions. I'm in lead of discussion, so I don't know if, who wants to.
Yeah, you can go first.
Trustee Hennany.
So I, I heard you talking about FFA and EHAB. And what I gather from hearing FFA regulation, it's basically a snippet of the Texas Education Code Language, which says that there's 30 minutes of daily PE or 150 minutes combined. Where I see the distinction is EHAB specifically denotes that it needs to be daily versus 150 minutes combined, and it needs to be 45 minutes daily. And that recess is protected as being unstructured play. Am I, am I correct in that evaluation of the, of both policies?
The, on FFA recess, I'll read again. "Elementary students will have at least 20 minutes of supervised recess each day, preferably outdoors, during which time the campus should promote moderate to vigorous physical activity by providing space, equipment, and verbal encouragement." So that's also, I guess, how we were viewing it, is that this is above and beyond what the phys, PE is protected physical education, and we still have the additional 20 minutes that is dedicated to recess, which is supervised yet unstructured.
Right. And I guess my question is, the, the, the regulation language in FFA is really, it's, it's Texas Education Code Language, which says 150 minutes combined or 30 minutes daily, whereas the EHAB is a little bit more specific in that it denotes daily, it has to be daily as opposed to 150 minutes combined, and it has to be 45 minutes daily, correct?
You're looking at me, trustee Hennany?
I am.
Yes. So, yes, I think you are correct about that.
Okay, so, I think really, I, I think I want to preface this conversation really by saying that, you know, next month accountability ratings are going to come out, and there's going to be a bit of a shockwave as the district really works to move the needle forward for test scores. And out of complete transparency, I anticipate that wind time will be utilized for HB 44, 45, 45 hours and additional interventions. Would that be accurate to say that there will be HB 45, 45 hours included in that intervention time perhaps?
Actually, with the, what we will be using it for is for intervention time that we will, based on not only just star scores, but also our universal screener, as well as our beginning of the year assessments like MAP, which what we're starting to begin just next week. So it'll really be more focused on what students need in terms of what they're telling us academically. Star scores will come into play, but we were going to be assessing where students are now, not exactly what they might have done on the star test, which was last spring.
Right, but will it be used at all potentially for HB 45, 45 hours?
I guess in some cases it might be, but that's not what's completely driving that and what we're not, what we're working with the, our elementary team to do too, because there is a concern that students are going to be trapped in five days of, of intervention, and that is absolutely not what we're planning to do to any student. That is really not in their best interest. Our focus in working with our academic teams is really focusing more on the literacy and the math skills, but still wanting students to have that opportunity for fine arts, for those out classes, for those specialty classes.
And it was just a clarifying question, so thank you. I think really this is how, how we consider physical education and fine arts for that matter to be part of a whole child education, not only as a integral to a holistic education, but also as an enhancement to academic achievement. I, I think this is how we view, this decision today is how we view this physical education as a critical component of our curriculum and as, as an extension of our classroom rather than something that can be substituted. So, you know, as we ask ourselves those, those questions, I think we have to rely on the research, especially when it comes to policies and practices and we, to ensure that these are evidence-based policies and practices. And thankfully, there is a lot of research out there, and we've, we've kind of touched on that throughout the day, our speakers have touched on that. You know, because the research does show that students who engage in physical education actually score better on standardized tests. Research shows that it improves cognitive functioning. And in light of, of students being home during COVID, there's actually a great body of research that shows that specifically physical education in schools is, is directly correlated to childhood obesity rates. There's a very important study that in fact shows that childhood BMI rates doubled with the absence of physical education when students were home during COVID. So in places like El Paso, where childhood obesity and diabetes soar above national averages, the importance of daily physical education, I think, becomes even more pronounced. And as the namesake school district, I think we have a responsibility to take our community's needs seriously when it comes to, you know, physical and emotional and mental health. I think we need to also consider the needs of special education students who sometimes have medically documented reasons for behavior regulation and emotional regulation that are often a benefit of PE. I think trustee Beals referred to this the last time as getting the wiggles out, she mentioned that several times. So when you have our community's demographics taken together with the research and the recommendations of organizations like American Academy of Pediatrics, American Heart Association, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, World Health Organizations, who all say we should be having PE on a daily basis, I think we have a responsibility to at least consult with our local medical, medical community as we make policy decisions that even give the district flexibility to remove PE, whether it's by minutes or by day. So, you know, when the board convened and brought forward recommendations to center the whole child and the mission of education when we did our strategic planning, I don't think the intention was to force parents to choose between PE and fine arts. And I can speak for myself directly when I say I believe it's antithetical to whole child education to make parents choose between PE and fine arts, and I don't think that it needs to be that way. And so I would hope that when we explore the concept of parental choice, it's not a decision between P and fine arts. And no matter how we slice and dice surveys, I think, you know, at the end of the day, that's what we're asking parents to do, is choose between P and fine arts here. So I, I would hope that we can create a master, master schedule that honors the need for a whole child education, the way that we intended it as a path to increased academic achievement. Because I think they, they need both, and I think we should be exploring parental choice, certainly in other ways. You know, fine arts elementary magnet schools, there are other options for out choice offerings that can be sort of done strategically in different ways. So I, for me, this is, you know, no other school district in El Paso has removed PE from the elementary master schedule, and they're still able to increase their academic performance. And this is one place for me that I don't want it to start with us, you know, to be sort of coy. And I do think that it's an important distinction for the public to know that typically the board does not have control over instructional minutes. And in this case, there just happens to be a specific policy in place that was put in place for a reason because there was a group of people that really wanted to protect unstructured recess, that wanted to protect daily physical education, probably for all the reasons that we've been talking about. And that policy is very clear, and I, I think we should be protecting the policy in light of the conversations we're having. Because without input from our local medical professional, professionals, without really understanding the long-term impacts of this, of a policy change, whether it's sports, behavior implications, implications to our special education populations, health educations, mental health implications, which our students are telling us over and over and over again we're struggling, I think there are implications to all of that. I think it's a disservice to kids to make an, an alternative recommendation than what's already existed in the policy. I want to just close this out. I'm going to, Dr. Lang, he's the president of Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center. He wanted me to read something. He said he couldn't be here. And I'll read what he said in part, it's not very long. He says, "All medical societies agree that obesity is a national epidemic that begins at childhood with poor dietary habits and physical inactivity the leading contributors. In the early 2000s, when physical education was not required at Texas K-12 schools, the Texas affiliate of the American Heart Association strongly supported passage of the current rules. Student participation of at least five hours per week must be required. We did so because data clearly showed that lower levels of physical activity and increasing sedentary behaviors in children contribute to the development of obesity. Exercise and physical education increase physical fitness, reduce obesity, and support the child to reach age-appropriate physical activity levels. I strongly urge you not to change, i.e. decrease, physical education requirements for the children. Removing or decreasing physical education from the schedule only fuels the obesity epidemic that already plagues our schoolchildren." And this is verbatim what he, he wanted me to read out to the public today. And that's going to conclude my thoughts for the moment.
I just want to clarify one comment, because I know that in both options, parents can be afforded fine arts, am I correct?
Correct.
So there's not a choice between fine arts and or PE? They can, they're afforded fine arts in either option?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. But I, I appreciate all of the other comments. As I said, you know, the, the administration is committed to understanding the research and understands the importance of physical activity. I, I would also share that it's important for us to understand that daily tier-one instruction that's consistent in every single content area is, is critical for, for student achievement as well, in concert and supplemented by physical activity. So, but there may be questions from other trustees.
Yes, ma'am. Trustee Quayre.
Great, thank you so much. Dr. Gonzalez, I don't have too many questions for you. They're more just comments. I don't know if you wanted to stay standing for everybody. I know everyone's really tired. It's been a late meeting. I think most of us have been in the back since 12:45 or before, so I'll just be super brief. You know, in speaking to a lot of the constituents and myself, I think President Iribali, Dr. Saavedra, Representative Erenandez, we just went to the Region 19 Teacher of the Year banquet, and lo and behold, the person that won it for Isleta Independent School District for the elementary level was a PE coach. And that spoke volumes to me, right? And me seeing that, and his name is Adrian Stevens. You know, he, he spoke a little bit longer than I think everybody thought, but, you know, he was really excited. You could see the passion there, and, and I, and I think it just rang true. You know, we have our Region 19 Elementary Teacher of the Year representing our area, and he's a PE coach, right? And he's stating, you know, the importance and what he tries to do in terms of social, emotional learning, and in terms of making sure that the child's needs are addressed and, you know, the physical aspects of it. You know, I, I understand what you all are trying to do, I really do. But I, you know, I would, you know, I would implore the other board members that in terms of trying to change the PE program, I just don't know what kind of snowball effect that's going to have on our physical education program, on our hiring of PE teachers and instructional staff, on certain grants that we get. You know, it's, it's one of those things where the last board meeting we had, we had that Kickstart program that we approved, which is in furtherance, and that's like a heightened PE program, right? Where it's types of martial arts that are being implemented in, in middle schools, but yet we're trying to maybe, and this might not be the right word, but stifle PE in elementary schools. And I get that the choice is there, I, I, I understand that. But in terms of, you know, trying to do something just to change it, I just don't see the positive aspects of it. And that goes back to recess time. I understand that what the code says is that there should be or there shall be 20 minutes. And I think you addressed this last time, Dr. Gonzalez, where you said, you know, it'd be great if the kids could have recess time, which is built into lunchtime, if they could have that before, right? Build up that hunger so that they would eat more food, hopefully. When I was a kid at Hillside, I hope our cafeteria manager from back then isn't listening, but the food wasn't like top-notch, right? So a lot of us would throw our food away. Literally, our principals would say, "You have to eat half." We would cut half the sandwich, throw it away and go play. But we didn't have cell phones, there was no social media, we didn't have any of that back then. It was, we wanted to go play basketball, right? Or football, or baseball, or kickball, whatever was available to us. But kids just aren't like that these days. If, even if you did that, you're still cutting into lunchtime, which it's going to take 10 minutes to wait in line, it's going to take a little bit of time to eat your food. There's just certain logistical aspects that I think a lot of us are forgetting. All of us were kids at a certain point, and you only have 35 or 40 minutes to do that. And I just don't see taking away time from PE where we can say, yes, we have recess time, but recess time really doesn't exist the way it should. If something could be changed in that realm, I would be all for it, but in terms of, you know, speaking to all the constituents out there, PE coaches, instructional staff, you know, I just, I, I, it, it's very, very difficult for me to support this. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Can I, I'm sorry. There's just one clarifying that I just, because I, I do feel like in just listening to our speakers and in some of the comments that people have, have shared, is that we're just sort of doing away and we're just going to, you know, we're not providing our students. I just sort of want to put some numbers in, in everybody's minds. That option B, which is basically what we're doing now, the five days and 45 minutes, because again, 45 minutes is protected, whether it's five days a week or four days a week, and with our recess, our students are active or at least have physical activity 325 minutes a week. That's an option B, and that's currently what we're doing between recess and PE. For the option A, for those that want to do the four days with the one day with fine arts, it's still 280 minutes a week that a student. arts, it's still 280 minutes a week that a student is as active between recess. And our lowest number, if we just were to follow FFA the way that we have it designed, which is 30 minutes, which is not on the table, we're not discussing 30 minutes of PE, we are maintaining the 45, it's still 250 minutes, even if we, FFA was followed to the way the regulation outlines. I just want to share that, because I do, I don't want people to walk away from these discussions and what we're doing in terms of scheduling and providing options and choices and activities for our students, that we're going anywhere near the minimum of what the state requires us, we're well over. Because we do have a dedication to that, and we do have an amazing health and wellness program. And just on a personal note, the irony that I'm the person who's generally, you know, accused of only caring about athletics, is up here talking about PE and defending that, you know, PE and physical activity and other electives and out classes. So I do, I hear everything you all have shared, I've heard everything that our parents and our community members have shared, I know how important it is to our students and to our campuses and our community, but it's just, why we're asking for some, you know, to look at this is to clear the clarity that we need in order to try to align a little bit, and maybe that's a discussion around another time, but, you know, we do want to be able to, to be able to look at providing our students as many options as possible, and I'll stop talking there, and I just wanted to give numbers, sometimes that helps.
Thank you, Dr. G, Dr. trustee Call.
Trustee Beals, you haven't spoken a whole lot, do you want to go first?
Sure, I'll just say something that was, that concerned me a little bit, I won't be long, because it's about 30 minutes past my bedtime, but I was, I had a question about the questionnaire, can anyone take that, participate in that questionnaire, and how many times can they take it? I love the option, I love the idea that parents are having a say, because I have four kids, and one would definitely rather do anything other than PE, right? But then I have my son who has ADHD and autism and needs that active time, so I've got kids that are on both, you know, options. I personally was able to take the questionnaire twice, for me, so my question is, next time or even this time around, can we do something to where only people in our district are able to take that questionnaire, and how many times can you take it?
I do believe that at one point, we went in to restrict the access to only one time, but it may have been after you already filled out the survey, because we did want to make sure that we included that provision. So we initially pushed it out on August the 2nd, and then we went back and sent out another reminder, and at that time, we also, and I think after we sent the reminder, we got just as many respondents as we did the first time, but it was, you could only do it one time, right? So, but, but thank you for that feedback, that's important for us to consider.
Trustee Call.
Yeah, I want to say something about this, this actual policy change, and then I want to talk just for a brief second about this process. So I actually love this, you know, this, this choice that we're, that we're giving parents now, I'm with trustee Beals, of my four current children in EPISD, one of them would love to have a little bit more fine arts, and the other, the other four, or, excuse me, the other three need that PE. And as someone with ADHD and a father of somebody who has ADHD, I need that physical education, I know that many of our students do. And I think the survey, despite, you know, maybe some of the technological hiccups, I think the survey was clear, parents want a choice. Parents want a choice, whether they want to have their kids in five days PE, or get some of that fine arts in there. So I, I think that this is, this is a good thing for our district, and I fully support it. Now, as to the process for a second, I know, I know there's been some criticisms of the process that I wanted to address very quickly. I think this is a learning experience for all of us, and as a leader, I admire Ms. Sayvedra actually more after this process, because I see a leader that, that has the best of intentions, and things didn't quite roll out the way that, you know, it was intended, and she pivoted, and she, you know, she, she made the, you know, made the adjustments that needed to happen, the community was consulted, and I want to give, you know, my appreciation to the superintendent and our board president for taking a lot of time and a lot of criticism on a Saturday morning to, to address the concerns of the community. Because we're a volunteer board with, with other day jobs, I personally wasn't able to be there because I had to work, but I appreciate the attendance of our superintendent and our board president. I'm also a little concerned, I just want to say real quick before, before I end my remarks here, I'm also a little concerned with some folks that, that use this as an opportunity to stir, to stir the pot unnecessarily, and I just think that that's, that's just not, not helpful at all for our kids or our district.
Trustee Hernandez, and then Dr. Savello.
I think this is the necessary step for us to move forward. One thing that, when I went to the meeting on August 5th, from the very beginning, I was introduced by Ms. Sayvedra, and I was there for the entire meeting. This step is necessary primarily because our test scores, as well as others probably around the state, are dismal. And this is what Ms. Sayvedra and her team had suggested that we do to combat this issue of having a win, like they do in high school, but to focus on what are the needs of those particular grade groups that are in lack of whatever they may need as a result of these test scores. I think we're fulfilling everything that we need to do, way over and beyond, like you were saying, whether it's structured or unstructured, we're giving them what they need. I love the proactive approach that we had to, to do to make, we knew from the very beginning, maybe we were a little late in implementing what we needed to do, but at the same time, this is a necessary step that we're having to do, and I love the concept, and I love the way we worked around having to present it to the community, and it was a learning experience, and I really appreciate the attempt that was made by staff and by the leadership we have here on this dice. Thank you.
Dr. Savello.
So I want to echo a lot of what trustee Call said about the superintendent, because I just can't imagine a world where many leaders are actually going to be saying that they messed up and that a process was messy, and you try to rectify it, and it came out with these options at the end. And so I really appreciate you tackling that head-on, because few people would do that. I, I still, and I still disagree with you in terms of where we're going with this, but I think the friendly disagreement is also really healthy, and I think we've had conversations about this. I think, for me, as trustee Beals said earlier on taking the survey more than once, I've been hearing that in the past few days as well, as, and so I'm a bit worried about the data that was, that was derived from the survey that we are presented with, I'm not sure it's giving us the full picture. The other thing that I've been hearing is that a lot of people are really confused about the survey, particularly, I'm assuming it's the survey instrument and how it's presented, I'm not sure that people fully know what WIN is, and so I'm wondering if people could have a better understanding of what that is, because I think going down the route of doing WIN is, is a good thing, and I said this a few weeks ago, but how it's being implemented by making people choose between PE and fine arts, that's kind of where I'm having a lot of heartburn with this. And, and so, it's not WIN itself, so I just want to be very clear, and I'm also very worried about what happens when the test scores come out in a few weeks, I think it's going to be really shocking to a lot of people we're at, as a district, and just thinking about what has happened in the three and a half years since COVID started, I think a lot of people had a lot of cabin fever that first year, and now that we, like even right now, we're entering probably hour nine being at the board, and I've just been wanting to get up and go outside and, you know, and I haven't done that. And so I can't imagine doing that with, with kids where they're, they're not necessarily going to do that every single day. And so I just think PE is just really important, and just anecdotal thing that is kind of dumb, and I recognize it. But I just remember going home every summer, and my grandma, by the end of the summer, would be like, "Well, you've put on some pounds." But don't worry, as soon as you're back in school, you're going to lose those pounds within the first month or two, and, and just thinking about that, I think a lot of our families are really experiencing a lot of that. And, and so I think there's those two things where you have the confusion on this survey, it seems to be flawed in how the results are getting taken and are being recorded, and then really explaining what WIN is, that way people can make the choice. And, and I think the choices that we should probably be offering is enriching our schools with better programming and stuff, and that's kind of not what this is to me. And the other thing that, just as a procedural thing, that kind of gives me a headache, is bringing the local policy when it's already being implemented to kind of fit what you're doing. I wish that this policy would have been brought to us before, and I think that kind of adds to the process for me, where it's like, well, we're already doing this, so how can we make the local policy fit? And I get it, it's a local policy, it's a thing that only applies at EPISD, but still local policy is made by the board of trustees, and it's just as important to me as the legal policy. I know we're within legal, and I get all of that, but bringing it after the fact just gives me a headache as well.
Well, and I appreciate you sharing that, I do want to clarify that right now, no other option is, is being implemented in schools, only option B, which is still aligned with the, the local policy that's before you. So, so I did want to make that clarifying, you know, and, and I will share that sometimes it's difficult, because in many cases, there's a lot of pre-work that needs to be done before a policy is brought to the board for its consideration. And so sometimes we're in a place where it's almost like the chicken before the egg, because if you bring the policy first, then, you know, go through, so, but it's good food for thought and, and good feedback, and so we'll take that into account. And your comments about the, the survey, I don't know if there's any additional information that the staff can provide about the survey, and the survey was really to give the, you know, for us, really to provide some information for principals, to be able to determine, what is your community thinking, what are they feeling, what are your, not necessarily for us to make a district, you know, wide decision, but really to give principals some information that they could draw from as they continue to talk to and engage with their community. And I would share with, with the public that your principal and, and your campus leaders are great resources when you think about, when you're confused, when you need answers, when there's additional information that you might need, they're more than happy to sit down with you and provide you information. You know, there's also the school leadership staff, but I do encourage, you know, parents to work directly with their principals, especially when they have specific questions, but I appreciate the feedback.
And just, you made me think of something, as you were saying, I think option B is only being implemented because this policy doesn't allow for option A yet, and I would ask the board tonight to, you know, leave the policy as it is for now, and come back in a few weeks, where you're going to have more on-the-ground stories to share with the board and say, you know, this is how WIN has been going for the last nine weeks of school, and have that conversation about this and see where we go with it, I'm not, I'm asking that of the board, and, and I'm willing to entertain that, and I think that's a good middle ground, instead of just striking down the policy, it also gives some leeway for the SHAC to meet in September and then have their feedback integrated, and then let's say we come back in October, and then we have all stakeholders at that point, where the SHAC had their voice heard, and then you have actual data of implementing WIN for the first nine weeks of school or so, and then we could have a better decision at that point. I'm just throwing that out there.
And if I could, if I could add to that, could...
Trustee Hernandez, if I can go first, then we'll go around too, but I just want to take a moment, because this is, I've been living and breathing this with the superintendent and staff for the last three, four weeks, and I just want to tell you a giant heartfelt thank you. I look around this room, and I think 80% of y'all were at the community meeting at Tom Lee, making yourself available to speak to, parents, staff, community members, whoever it may be, I think that we really heard your voice and had that opportunity to engage with you, get that feedback. And I do want to point out that trustee Hernandez was there from the beginning and was in attendance as well, and I thank you for that, because I think it shows that this board's taking this conversation very serious. It's no secret, I've said it several times, that, you know, I was not a fan of the rollout, Ms. Sayvedra pivoted very quickly and addressed the concerns that I had, the concerns the community have, the parents, you name it, she was concerned, and she made corrections immediately, and that's what led to the options that we see before us. In addition, we see constant updates happening to this, this program as we get feedback, as we look at the impacts to our DRD students, our special education students, as we look at the impact to our teachers, and the staff has done an amazing job. This is the first time I've been in the trenches, as it were, with, with staff, and I have to say, like, I was just very proud, because yes, we made a mistake at the beginning, but we were able to recover that fumble and come out, and I think we came out really well. Though some people are going to be disparaging and say that that community meeting was, was not productive or not efficient, what I took away from it was, every community member had a different voice, we listened to that voice, we took that feedback, and then we enhanced our programming that exists. We were able to put to rest a lot of the misnomers that existed, such as we were going to fire PE teachers, we put to rest that we are not going to two days PE, and I think that those misconceptions that kind of permeated throughout the community in the absence of information from us, only got clarified because we took those steps and because of y'all's leadership by going there on a Saturday, the last one before many of your kids go back to school, and spending that time with the community, so thank you very much, first and foremost, from that. Some of the other things I just, I just want to ask, Dr. G, I know you said that the intent is not for HB45-45, so I guess I have the question of, if a student fails the STAR test, which then would flag them for HB45-45 intervention, correct? But in the assessments that we're doing, we see that this, this kid is above and beyond where they should be, and it clearly is a differentiation between, "I'm a bad test taker," versus, "I excel and I'm great at what I do." What in that situation was, as a district, would you recommend for that child?
You know, I would really, well, I think most of our children, we're going to find, we've even talked about, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to really get our GT program back up and running, but even our most high-level students may have areas that they need to improve upon. And so what we would hope is that we can personalize it enough that it's not like if I have to have some intervention, whether it's because of STAR, whether it's because of screening, or whether it's because I'm just not doing well in class, that it's in incremental sections. We've talked a lot about that any course, whether it's intervention enrichment, it may be a three-week course, four-week, or six weeks, we'll determine as we go and we sort of work through what works, what the kids' interests are, and then we keep rotating, we have cycles. And so I think that's important to, for as a parent and even as a teacher, to understand that in a, in a full week, I may only have two or three days that I'm getting additional academic support, and the other two or three days, depending on how much the support, I'm getting an opportunity to do some exploratory, discovery, enrichment opportunities. So I'm not going to say that, you know, especially as we get more guidance, they keep sort of changing House Bill 45-45, but as we get more understanding of what will qualify, if we can do the hours during the day and utilize our intervention time in order to meet those state requirements, of course we would do that, but it's not going to drive everything for us, it's just that we want to do and provide that support for our students during the school day. We don't want to have to ask them or a parent to come in the mornings or stay after so that we can do any kind of mandatory House Bill 45-45. And as was mentioned, parents can opt out of that as well, if they feel like their students, they're going to be okay, it was a bad test-taking day. But I don't want to say that we're not going to use it at all, because we are going to use it for interventions. If those students happen to be students who are required to have hours, we'd be foolish not to count that time towards that, just so that we could say that compliance piece is taken care of, but we've never stopped at the, at the 30 hours or the 15 hours, whatever was required, we keep going until that student is where they need to be. We keep going until that student is where they need to be academically.
Well, and, but I want to clarify that House Bill forty five, forty five, I know that, you know, that there's a lot of provisions that go along with that. And, and typically, children are identified based on their, you know, STAR score. But I want to go back to sharing, um, why it's so important for time to be within the school day for us to provide additional time and support for students. I think that the shift here is really focused on skill-based work with a, with a child rather than, um, working with a child to, you know, in a, with test prep materials so that they can do better the next time they sit for the STAR school, uh, for the STAR assessment. And so yes, STAR scores may pre-identify a student, but we would go back and look at our, uh, reading diagnostic, our numeracy diagnostic, so that we could see what are the gaps in skills as a student is developing as a reader? What are the gaps in skills as students are developing their numeracy, um, and their math facts? So that we have an entry point to have targeted time and support for a child. Not, a- and, and with that, we know that we're setting a child up for success to perform well on a standardized test rather than House Bill forty five, forty five, what we call tutoring, which is very test prep based. And so shifting away from that and a more, um, targeted intervention support time is really what we're trying to accomplish.
I think the targeted time is key there. We've been doing House Bill forty five, forty five during the school day, but we were having to pull kids out of other classes to do it. So this way, we're protecting that time. So no longer, as we, we mentioned on August first, do we need to pull students away from social studies, from science, or sometimes even math and English language arts in order to do, um, pullouts, the push-ins? We had the high-impact tutors, we had all kinds of extra support thanks to S R to be able to have a lot of hands on deck in order to support students, in order to achieve those hours. But they were being, a lot of those hours, if they were during the school day, um, very few of our campuses were able to designate just that time. That time was at the expense of somewhere else. And that's what this schedule is trying to move us away from.
So is it fair to say that the, the win time and the, the enrichment intervention opportunities that exist is gonna focus on what our assessment says and how we need to catch that child up if they need it? Versus looking at your performance on a STAR test saying you, you didn't perform well, therefore we do have to be this innately?
It's part of, it's part of the data set, yeah, absolutely. It's part of what we will look at, but with all that, um, Dr. Kennedy has, has shared in terms of how we're going to assess and all the different data points that we're going to have, all of that will come into play in terms of designing and deciding with, in conjunction with the teacher, the parent, the student, the, the campus staff, what that student needs and, and for how long.
Okay, and I think just, you know, I, I wanted to ask trustee Beals a question. Why did you fill out the survey twice? I think I know the answer, I just don't want to guess. Is that, is that why?
No, I, it, it wasn't because of that. I actually was, um, trying to figure out some questions that some, um, parents were asking me. So I went back on there to see.
No, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry. So I had gone back on there, um, to kind of see and walk through what this parent was asking me about. And as I was walking through it, I voted again. And I was like, oh, how did that happen?
Gotcha.
So it was by accident, but, you know, it still happened.
I'm happy I didn't make my assumption then because I, I actually have a constituent, which I will not name. She has four kids in elementary school and she took the thing four times. Because for her, each of her children need a voice and each of her children need to have an option. I had other, um, constituents that took it three or two times, based on the number of kids that they had, because this model is supposed to fit what their child's needs are and what the child specifically focused on. And so while I, I think we have to clean this up and find a better way, I do think it's important that we either tie it to student ID, something of that nature that can be tied back or something that allows parents with multiple kids in our, in our districts. I know there's several trustees up here with several kids in the district to have that voice and do that. Um, and then the only other things I want to touch on, I think we as a board have made it very clear that we one hundred percent believe and agree with the whole child, uh, dealing with the health concerns as we talk towards obesity, uh, as we talk towards mental health and things of that nature. And some things I just do want to highlight for this board is, part of the reasons that these issues do exist is because we live in many neighborhoods that have food deserts, that we have very limited options for these kids to get fresh vegetables and fruits. And in many cases, our campuses fill that need and that gap. And I'm very proud of our district for leading the charge and providing meals in the evenings. I know Andrews High School is, is one of those locations and I'm very proud of that because there are many times when those kids will not get another meal, or they will get a unhealthy meal with fast food that is being as cheap as it is. And I think that that's kind of how we have to look at this. This is not PE and physical activity fixes all and is a cure-all. I know people that walk every day but still suffer from diabetes and, and obesity. I mean, a lot of it is behavioral. Uh, my dad passed away last year from his constant lifelong fight with diabetes. The, the man would do physical activity, but his diet is where the detriment came in and, and came into effect. And so when we look at these things, we have to look at it more in a holistic approach and realize it's a lockstep system that we need to do. And so if we're gonna really practice the whole child thing, then let's look at the food deserts that exist. How can we utilize our schools as a center and a nexus for eliminating that food desert? How can we teach nutrition and do it in the best way possible? If physical activity is a concern that we're having, it's nine times out of ten, I don't say nine times out of ten, it's, it's highly likely that it's behavioral or taught from the parents and below. And so what can we do? I know Tom Lee is a good example of this, that invites the parents down to the campus to do the physical activity of the day with their kids some days. So I think it's once a month, if I'm not mistaken, um, it might be more. Um, and I think teaching those behaviors with your kid is the most healthy thing that we can do. And so I, I don't want us to just get bogged down in this is the only option because I know people that walk five days a week and still suffer from the same ailments and the same issues. When it comes to mental health, uh, Dr. G, we've talked about this several times, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but there's opportunities for win to be used for mental health opportunities. And just the meeting we had yesterday with Tracy Yellen and the Paso del Norte Foundation, um, a lot of that conversation was centered around using that win time to address some of the needs that our families, military or otherwise, may need in the mental health space. Is that, is that correct?
Absolutely, and, um, our team and through academics that's working on our multi-tiered systems of support, they're helping us design and develop a lot of the win. And their, their focus is very much on the mental health and wellbeing of students and how we can build in the S C L, how we can use our counselors during this time for small groups, um, larger groups. Just, there's the whole child again, it's, it's everything. It's social, emotional, it's the mental health, the physical health, all of it is important to us. And so absolutely, that's, that S C L, uh, the mental health component is definitely gonna be a very strong part of win and one of the options, multiple options, actually.
And I'll end on this really quick anecdote, but, but I think most of the staff here have seen my daughter. My daughter is five years old, she's on the first percentile for weight and first percentile for height. She is the tiniest thing you'll ever see and, and she has me wrapped on her finger, I will never deny that. But something that happened as we started going back to school this year is my daughter was very concerned about this idea of going back to PE. And she was terrified it. And though she has built a strong relationship with her PE coach who she loves and adores, for somebody with the limited physical ability at her age and at her size right now, that was something that would keep her up at night and wanted her to not go to school. And so as a parent, having an opportunity where I can supplement that physical activity at home, I'm a runner, I can take them to the park, I can do these things, at the same time introduce her to other avenues that may pique her interest and may get her back into our schools and excited about school and be supportive of our teachers and be willing to go the next day just happy and positive. That is an amazing thing as a parent for me to be able to make that decision, knowing my kid. Because while I respect teachers and I respect the administration, you guys spend just as much as time with my kid, maybe more now that I'm president, but at the end of the day, I truly know her and, and, and down to her essence and her very core. And when we looked at this, I voted for option A for my daughter because getting her excited back about school is what my job is. Getting our kids back in there, being excited, going back and challenging themselves and doing something new, that's our job. And this to me has been a huge adult issue. We hear it all the time, this board should be making decisions on children and children and children. And it blew out of proportion because adults took control of it, they shaped a narrative that wasn't accurate or true, and it blew out of proportion. And I'm not, I'll also say, we didn't do a good job either. And so, you know, as we look towards the future, I just want to make sure that we're focusing on the right thing. We control that narrative towards the kids and what that means. And then not, let's stop looking at kids as a one-size-fits-all and look at the options that, that do exist. Trustee Call was asking me to speak.
Yeah, can I make a motion? Um, I just wanted to make a motion.
Well, I want, Asaveto had said, if we decide to table this, I would just ask that a medical professional be included in the conversation.
Um, I'm gonna make an, a motion and then I'll entertain any friendly amendments because I think there's something that could alleviate a lot of the concerns here. But I move that the board adopt, uh, the proposed revisions to board policy EHAB Local Basic Instruction Program, Required Instruction Amendmentary as presented.
Second.
And then I, I would actually request a friendly amendment, um, if, if you'll, you'll hear me out.
Yes.
So a- as, as one of the trustees that was actively in the front line and the communication, the biggest concern I got, I think through and through, was you guys are really strategizing this way to go to two days of PE and that's what your game plan is and that's what it's gonna be. And, and I hear this from one of my constituents, I know Ms. Ayvedra ve- very well because we worked together hours through days and nights, you know, it's just a lot of time. But the general public does not. And though you do a great job of being visible, I think that we as a board need to put a protection in place to make them understand that any other op, um, changes that may come, we'll go through the Shack as we promised, we'll go to the feeder patterns as we promised, and then eventually come back to the board and have a greater discussion. So to that end, with the language that was struck out and I gave my notes away, here it is. So we're, it would read, what I'm proposing is the twenty minutes of unstructured recessed time each day shall be in addition to the minimum of four days structured physical education and before and or after-school physical activity programs. Uh, thereby really solidifying, codifying that we, our intent is not to be deceptive, it's not to take advantage of the community because the superintendent's gonna push through this thing that was blown out of proportion. But rather that we're here to work as a partner and what she's done already is something she's gonna build on as we tackle this issue moving forward. Yes, so it would be, the language would now be the twenty minutes of unstructured recessed time each day shall be in addition to, I'm adding this, uh, and no minimum of four, or, or four days minimum of structured physical education. Allowing for option A, which we see there's several campuses across our district that would want. So Mr. Call, if that's acceptable by you or not? Do we need another second on that, Ms. Collins, since there was a friendly amendment?
It's a friendly amendment, you're fine.
Okay. So I, I guess-
But you do, I, I think you need to, it's a friendly amendment, but that you're, you're still gonna need a second.
Yes, that's okay. So I guess Ms. Hernandez, is that a friendly amendment acceptable with you as well? So we have our, our, our motion from trustee Call, our second by trustee Hernandez, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in opposition?
No.
No.
Okay, so that is, uh, four votes, yes, that's trustee Call, trustee Irovalli, trustee Hernandez, trustee Beals in favor, trustee Cuellar, trustee Asaveto, and trustee Hanani in opposition, the motion passes. And before we move on to item eight C, I've been asked by trustee Call for a motion to reconsider. Sessi, can you walk me through this so I don't screw this up royally, please?
Um, well-
Should this be after the, this next question?
You should, yeah, you should take up all the items, all the business items, and then you can take up the motion to reconsider after, um, you finish that.
Okay, so that will take us-
But before adjournment.
Okay, perfect, that takes us to motion eight C. Um, this is the election of board office of the vice president. Um, at the last meeting in June, I know that we all had a conversation, went through the elections. Mr. Call was, uh, voted with four votes to be the vice president. And what we went back and looked at policy, Ms. Collins and Ms. Hanani reminded us that it says that you cannot serve consecutive terms in the same office. So thereby that would eliminate, uh, trustee Call as a potential, uh, vice president. So, uh, keeping in line with our policy and transparency, we waited for the first meeting when all the trustees would be back. Uh, this is the first occasion that we have had. And so, uh, much like we did the first time, I will take, um, nominations, uh, for the vice president. Uh, once we have all the nominations, we'll go into, uh, remarks, why trustee feels that they should get that position, and then we'll go into a vote.
I nominate Dr. Asaveto.
Second.
I nominate, yeah, excuse me, long day, I nominate trustee Beals.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so I will pass to Dr. Asaveto for remarks, if you so please, and then, uh, trustee Beals after.
Can we move to a vote?
Oh, okay, do you have nothing to say? Trustee Beals, do you have anything you want to say?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes.
Um, my name is Valerie Beals, I am, uh, the newer trustee over District Six. Um, in the last couple of months that I've been a trustee, I have really enjoyed learning the ins and outs of the district and how everything works. And, um, I feel that, you know, I, as a stay-at-home mom, not saying that I don't have enough to do, because I do, but I have the flexibility to be a little bit more, um, present, um, a little bit more involved. And, um, I think that, um, fresh eyes and fresh ears is something that our board could benefit from. And that's it.
Okay, so we will go to the vote, I'll go down the row, trustee Cuellar?
Uh, trustee Asaveto.
Dr. Asaveto?
Trustee Asaveto.
Trustee Call?
Uh, trustee Beals.
Trustee Irovalli is, uh, trustee Beals, trustee Hernandez?
Trustee Beals.
Trustee Hanani? Trustee Beals.
Trustee Beals.
So that's four for trustee Beals and three for Dr. Asaveto, trustee Beals. Congratulations, Vice President Beals. Um, I do want to ask the board on this, I know it's been a very, very long day. We still have a report from our facilities. Um, I know in close session, we talked some about one of the projects. I would re, I don't know if this is something you guys would entertain to postpone it till the next item or next meeting in September, is it going till eleven? Is that something, can, can, I guess I do, I would need a motion to postpone it, a second, and then we'll vote on it.
I move to postpone.
So can I get a second?
Aye, second.
That's a motion by trustee Call, a second by trustee Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a seven oh vote. And then before we go to Ms. Ayvedra's, I am gonna do the motion to reconsider now, Ms. Collins.
Okay, so the motion to reconsider really has two parts. So a motion to re- reconsider can only be made by somebody who voted in favor of the item that passed. Um, I am as, uh, uh, I'm assuming that the item that you're gonna reconsider is the, um-
The equity.
The equity audit. Um, and I understand that, trustee Call?
Yeah, um, I was just thinking more about what, um, Dr. Asaveto said. And, and, uh, I want more time to look into the reputation of this, of this company that we're, uh, considering. So I can go ahead and make the motion to reconsider, um, motion-
Six K thirteen.
Do I have a second? I can second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass a seven oh, and then now we would take the new motion, correct?
Right, you can take up the original motion, uh, as it was before. Um, it can be amended, it can, you can refer it to committee or you can take any other kind of action that you would like to take.
Can I just table it, uh, make the motion to table it?
Until September.
Until September.
You can.
Okay. So I, so I'm open.
That was second.
Second.
Second, so that's a motion by trustee Call, a second by Dr. Asaveto, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is a seven oh unanimous vote. And that takes us to our final item, which is number ten, items on the next meeting month's agenda.
Yes, I'll just be very quick. Uh, we have, um, quarterly financial reports, an annual investment report. Um, as the board just decided, we'll come back with our bond, um, update report, uh, our quarterly bond update report. Um, we are also going to be bringing the board in September, um, some information, um, updating you all with, um, preliminary results that are coming out, uh, for the STAR exam, along with some academic information. So, um, and then we'll have a public meeting to discuss the district's rating, um, for Financial Integrity Rating System in October. So those are some of the, the things, uh, that are forecasted in September and October. I also want to remind the board that we'll be bringing back information to you on the S L Ps, um, as well, and the L S S Ps and diagnosticians.
So that brings us to item eleven, which is adjournment. Thank you, everybody, I know it's a late night, and we are going to adjourn the meeting at ten oh five. Thank you very much.